Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting. Here being held on June 9th in council chambers. We are convened on the Squamish Station traditional territory. I will need to read a protocol statement for electronic meetings. If you'll just indulge me for half a minute here. So council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the chair of the meeting in the following circumstances. When the council member disconnects or reconnects, that is enters or exits the meeting, so that this can be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Council members are to identify themselves when they advise the chair that they wish to be placed on the speaker's list. With respect to a vote, council members are only required to state a nay vote. No statement is required if the member is in favor. Council members shall put the telephone or computer on mute unless they wish to speak. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting. Council members shall text the chief administrative officer or the corporate officer if they have technical difficulty with their telephone or computer. That is if they need to be reconnected to the meeting. The meeting shall be recessed for up to 10 minutes if a technical difficulty occurs on the district side, which results in the council member being unable to be connected to the meeting. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Counselor Herbert, Counselor Stoner, seconds. And calling the question on the agenda. All in favor? None opposed? Adopted, thank you. The first item we have up is the Victoria Street pedestrian bridge design. And we'll have a presentation from our staff. I'd just like to advise all of us, Counselor Reese, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm declaring a conflict in this matter. I am a potential purchaser of a unit on waterfront landing development. This is associated with having signed a contract yet, but my name is on the list. So I am a potential purchaser. That creates the contract, so I refuse myself from the duty.
Thank you, Counselor Reese.
I'm gonna move him out. Tell them I'm moving him out.
That will be looked at by our corporate affairs.
Thank you.
So why can't we still see him now? Okay, Doug, turn your video off. Can you hear us?
Okay.
Start a break session? He's there, he's in here now.
Very good then. Well, it is an important and also rather technical item. So I will just ask that we all try to be as efficient as we can with our discussion, questions, and presentation. But we have been a lot of 45 minutes. We'll see what happens with that. And I'm turning the presentation over to, I believe, Jonas Feleniskas. Is that correct? You're on mute, Jonas.
I was just gonna introduce the staff in the presentation. I see Dave is already there.
Thank you.
So, yes, this presentation on Victoria Street pedestrian bridge will be delivered by Mr. Merrill, who's already there, and also Susan Stratus, who is the fighter on the waterfront landing file. And we also have other staff attending. If there's any technical questions, Bob Smith is here, as well as Dave Rollson, as he goes through the site construction. And also, we have some technical representatives of the applicants specific to technical aspects of the bridge, who will be doing a presentation as well.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Jonas. I believe it's time for me to jump in here. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we're hearing you just fine here, Ms. Reese.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Susan Stratus. I'm a planner who's been working on this project for a number of years now. And I'm pleased to present the latest iteration of the pedestrian bridge as the design starts to take shape. Next slide, please. Our purpose today is to provide council with a very general update on the status of the Victoria Street pedestrian bridge. But primarily, the purpose today is to obtain council feedback on the overall bridge design and materials prior to the developer's bridge design team finalizing the design. There's a lot of details involved, and we're principally looking at the above-ground structure, not the below-water structure today. This was really a discussion about the aesthetics of the bridge. And we've had one staff review of this information. And I believe it's important for council to see in part with the general direction of this design. Next slide, please. I'll just read through this in case we need to apply for reference. This is the waterfront landing site, so it doesn't look like that today. But it's located on the east side of the Macon Line Channel directly across from downtown. Next slide, please. The bridge history of this site, the waterfront landing subarea plan was adopted in 2017. The drawing on the left shows the overall site plan. And the drawing on the right hand side shows the choosing plan with an arrow pointing to the pedestrian bridge. I just want to find out that the pedestrian bridge was brought forward to become Phase 2 at the request of the previous council. It was originally intended to be constructed as Phase 4 concurrently with the upland parts of Phase 4, but some council at the time requested that the bridge construction be advanced. So it is now considered to be Phase 2B. And it's a car that's been completed prior to the final occupancy permit of Phase 2B. This is also shown on that slide. Next slide, please. One thing to emphasize in this project is the importance of this bridge and the importance of other elements of the transportation infrastructure that has been constructed with the waterfront landing project. The developer has provided a number of key pieces of this infrastructure, including the intersection at Clark Drive in 1999, the bridge over the railway west of that intersection, construction of Laurelwood Road to the arterial standards, and the pedestrian bridge to downtown. All of this infrastructure, aside from surveying the development, the district will significantly improve the overall east-west connectivity for bicycles and pedestrians once it's complete. Next slide, please. And just to showcase in the context of the Squamish OCP, the active transportation plan is shown on the right. And you can see the various pedestrian biking routes indicated. And if you look at the waterfront landing site, I guess the intent was there to ideally cross it over to Victoria Street and this bridge. What we're looking at today is the fulfillment of that drawn show in the OCP. Next slide, please. One of the important pieces that's taken place earlier this year was the applicants receiving their Transport Canada approvals under the Navigable Water Act. The preceding year, I guess, through late 2018 and 2019, the applicants completed their operational plan and submitted documentation to Transport Canada's identity bridge approval. The approval was attached to the agenda. They're also go through that in detail, but it references the construction department marine communications plan and the operational requirements for the bridge that very much influenced the design of the bridge. So very quickly, the bridge operations and safety protocols require that the district operate the bridge and maintain navigation through the Macon Line Channel. That's been one of the very essential pieces the Transport Canada requirement was, so that the community can tell when we operate this bridge. And the operating parameters that have been decided on reflect input from the community and from the district. There were a couple of public meetings with community surveys and some difficult decisions that they've made in the operating parameters that have now been approved. And key amongst those parameters of the bridge will be found and will provide marine access on conferences. So that's a very quick deniers of that approval. Next slide, please. And I'll turn this over to Dave Merrill, who's just gonna walk you through a couple of the operational requirements.
Good afternoon, council. As Susan mentioned, Transport Canada and effective marine uses sort of develop these operating parameters, which are defined in the operational requirements for the structures for Canada. This slide provides a table of some of the key parameters that are within that operating schedule. So what's in the table laid out are the two operating seasons, which are defined as the summer and the winter seasons, and the operating times for each of those seasons. And also, because of the operating times, the response time, which essentially means the time from which we get a request to open the bridge to the time at which that bridge opened and the transit can occur. There are two, it's split up into summer and winter, just due to the expected amount of traffic to the bridge. And also, outside of those operating times, the bridge still has to be opened if there's a request to open it. The response time, however, is increased so that perhaps a staff person, the operating tender, I should say, doesn't need to be out there, which could be called to respond to the lift request. Also, I then have the cycle time, which is essentially the time from which the pedestrian gates close, the bridge opens, the transit occurs, the bridge closes, and then the pedestrian gates are open as well. So there's a requirement for a minimum amount of time that occurs. Next slide, please. So as far as organizational impacts related to this bridge, the construction costs, including design, all the permitting, all the working of Transport Canada, the public consultation upfront by the applicants, post-approach. As Susan mentioned, the operations and maintenance costs for the bridge will be borne by the district. So as mentioned, the bridge must be operated in accordance with the approved operating parameters from Transport Canada. So for the first year of operation, it's very strict how this bridge needs to be operated according to the previous slide. After one year of operation, the bridge tender will be recording all information about the transits, when they occur, what type of vessel. So we'll have a detailed record of how many users are actually, how many vessels that bridge actually occur. It should be noted that the only time that's expected that this bridge will be lifted is for sailors and possibly very large cruisers. The majority of those, at high tide, will be able to pass beneath the bridge that would be open. After one year of operating the bridge, we can go to Transport Canada and make a case to modify the operational parameters. This, of course, needs to be supported by data that the tender will be collecting during the year. But if we find that only a handful of vessels occur, or that the lifts occur at specific times that we can possibly predict, you know, with the tides or the time of day, we can then take that data and propose changes in the operational parameters, which will likely lessen the impact to district operations for the amount of time or effort that we need to spend operating the bridge. So we've done some very preliminary cost estimations for operational maintenance of the structure with our public works department. The cost that we've developed at this point, which I must guarantee is preliminary, ranges from approximately $170,000 to $300,000 a year. This cost includes training and bridge operations for the whole year, annual maintenance, inspection, maintenance and cleaning, repair contingency, and electricity costs. It should be noted that again, this is for sort of worst-case scenario, the first year where we have to have somebody available at all times for operation of the bridge. We are getting a third-party expert to review these costs, so hopefully we'll have a better idea of what we can expect to spend for operation and maintenance in this first year very soon. Next slide, please. As far as the next steps, the bridge design team has prepared preliminary design and see today for the sort of aspects of the bridge. They've also prepared preliminary designs of the technical, mechanical details and the structure itself that staff has reviewed and checking. Moving forward, we're looking at the detailed designs of all of these components. The detailed design will, of course, include coordination with the flood protection works, shoreline location protection on the waterfront landing site, and dike on the downtown site, as well as coordination with the aquatic park design that's upcoming and the flood protection works that are proposed for that site. In addition, DTA number 1, developer number 1, environmental approval, and DFO approvals need to occur for the indoor works. And the current estimate for actual construction of the bridge, it's expected that we will hopefully be able to start construction next summer with approximately one year construction time completed in the summer of 2022. And next slide, please. With that, I'll pass it on to the design team to run through their presentation.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Hi, can I put on handy, eh?
You've got two speakers or two microphones happening. We're getting significant feedback.
Sorry, is that any better?
Nope.
You've still got a couple of things going there.
Were you using two devices, Ellie?
I know, I'm just on one device.
Can you turn your speaker down?
Is that better?
Not when you speak, no.
Oh, that's not enough, eh?
No, that's worse. And if other people can make sure that they've got their microphones muted while they're not presenting, then we'll be able to.
Okay, is that any better?
It is, I believe. Shall we give it a try? Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Please proceed.
Okay. Sorry about that, eh? Thank you. I'm Ellie Turgham from Aspect Shuffle Engineers. And we are acting as the prime control team on this exciting project. Also on the line, we have Andrew from Aspect, architects Antonio and Rafael from Artur, and Brenda from both offices. And next slide, please. And yeah, and next slide again, please. And one more. So we don't have too much time here, so I'll quickly try and talk through some of the key factors and site constraints that have been the key drivers during the design development of the bridge so far. As Susan mentioned, the bridge will be an extension of Victoria Street and will link the new waterfront landing development with downtown Squamish. The design life is 75 years, and it is being designed for a 100-year sea level rise in shore resilience against climate change. Next slide, please. The bridge will be about 100 meters long with a minimum width of four meters. And this width has been determined to be suitable for a multi-use path for pedestrians and cyclists in both directions. At the west landing, the cycle path will be integrated into the landscape with new seroco development at the foot of Victoria Street. And at the east landing, the path will extend into the new waterfront development and eventually tie into the corridor trail. We are fairly congested site with constraints including seroco's proposed stroke home development. The requirements have provided access to a public transit dock below the bridge deck, both as proposed marina and the navigation tunnel. Next slide, please. So as Susan and Dave touched upon, the key design feature here is that the bridge must operate to provide a clear 14.5 meter gap for boat traffic to pass through within a tight 10-minute cycle time set out by Transport Canada. These requirements have strongly influenced the overall design. During the design development, we've considered various options for the movable portion of the bridge, including pivoting, sliding, floating. We've looked at a lot of different options, and ultimately, we've landed here with a double-tour bridge powered by hydraulic pistons. This option allows shore to cantilever span, saving on structural demand, materials, costs. It allows reduced cycle times, and it is beneficial with other challenges we have on this site, such as high wind speed and poor ground conditions. Two hydraulic pistons will lift each of the spans, and these have been chosen for dependency for long-term resilience, and they have been designed for redundancy as one of the Transport Canada's key requirements. To further the G4 cycle times, we've positioned the pedestrians' security gates on the bridge adjacent to the arch support spans, maintaining a safe distance from moving parts. Localized sunout have been integrated with seating to encourage pedestrians and cyclists to sit, wait, and watch while the bridge opens and closes. I'll now hand over to Antonio to talk you through the design further.
All right, everyone, can you hear this okay?
Yes, we're fine, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thanks, perfect. Next slide, please. We can skip the operating parameters, so next slide. Next slide. So thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Next slide. We'll be talking about the thought process and design principles that inform the architecture expression. Function: A bridge first and foremost connects point A to point B. With the challenge of circulation happening on the east, context, geology, history, culture all to inform the future of Squamish. All this has been taken into account. Program: Typically, a bridge doesn't have a program, your mental process. Yet in our case, thanks to the context, there's an opportunity to establish points of interaction. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We have analyzed dozens, if not hundreds, of residents to research what makes a meaningful experience, from materials to shapes, finding their references that explain how the bridge not only connects point A to B, but itself to its context. Next slide, please. We found the possibility to make a space within the organization of the bridge for history activity supported by public infrastructure, ranging from benches to viewing platforms to the integration of cultural elements and interpretive signage. These elements will be developed in future phases. Next slide, please. Before jumping into showing you images of the bridge, we will talk about the rationale that generated. Next slide, please. We'll need a health connection, and this will force you to go around. Next, please. Now there is one. This element of public infrastructure enables a new circulation dynamic which connects the community. Next, please. Circulation is consistent, allowing traffic flow in the body of water that is passed through paddles and loaves. The nomodular idlasia is a combination of several or under vessels. Next slide, please. All of this dysfunction, let's go back to work. How does a bridge become a bridge for Squamish? Next slide, please. Like the geological formation of a rock that has been cleft into, so are most of the corridors of the bridge. Next slide. By recognizing to run the elements, we have identified potential use along the bridge, among very obvious in the north, the chief to the east, out sound to the south, and casual road to the west. Next, please. Prespecting the four-meter width of this corridor, look at the strategic capability to enable pedestrians to have a moment of rest and enjoy the views. Next, please. To act in trade this moment, for the user of the moment, the key on the bridge drops or it runs off at the point of entry and has the potential to take weight. Next, please. The secure planning or scheme consists of vertical geoslides that are both the essence of the west coast line corridor. The slides move up and down in a consistent pattern, climbing and allowing conflict development and becomes a large vertical pattern, paying towards seating areas, maximizing the opportunity. Next, please. Slides unfold and crank, evoking the narrative of the board. A deliberate abstraction of the complex social land, the analogy of a natural element evolved certain way. Next, please. Next, please. The bridge spans across the Macon Line Channel with a series of programmed landscape elements and activity forms providing opportunities for the community to engage. It aims to become not just a passage, but a destination, a moment for the blue banks of the channel to come birds. Next, please. The bridge offers layers of programmatic activity, it presents an extension of the landscape and amenity for the community, a place where visitors are stored, and provides different experiences at different places. Next, please. The bridge is designed to be a connecting, a cohesive connection between CMK development and downtown Squamish. Next, please. A generic extension of the platform allows traditional for the bank functions for the nation, as well as the ability for a wide range of eventual use. Next, please. The bridge is conceived as fully compliant and credible, taking in that both surgeons and strollers alike, just like bicycles and any woodwork, will be able to use the bridge without any difficulty. The rating of establishing technical requirements as the code. Next, please. Next, please. In a more evolved view study, we begin to appreciate the materiality of height of your weight on the floor of it, the weight of your climb, as well as the improvements with weight. Next, please. The primary type of element we see here allowing the use, as one is looking out of the bridge, hell, while the second ever seen consisting of a fine steel mesh provides a limited safety barrier against the bridge. Next, please. The two skin systems enable the mechanical circulation. Next, please. Faces are created as local like local points along the bridge, each with a unique connection to the channel and interline. Next, please. All systems are placed in a different shape in this view, benches by rest guards, interfered signage, double steam climbing, and floor braking. Next, please. Natural gateway would suggest traffic to be finding. Next, please. The many viewpoints have been taken into consideration, incorporating unique elements that are not previously experienced. Some ideas include hydrids, artistic elements such as interference banjos and sand congas. Next slide, please. Interfered with same elements double off at the safety area for the chemical system. Next slide, please. Next, please. Next please. The variations of the mapping of the bridge can be appreciated in light where there's a solid rhythm going on in that. Next please. The geometries of the bridge will inform the shape of benches within, while keeping a safe distance from edges at all times. Next please. The control room carries the same language as that of the bridge as it follows the same materiality and geometric expression. Final location due to the determine. Next slide please. You can appreciate the bridge, the bridge included in, in full context in its closed position. Next slide please. And you, uh, know from position. Next slide please. As we move to different lighting conditions, now at night time, the distribution of the lighting materials make it a big difference. Recent studies have been conducted to identify the location of light elements along the bridge's furniture and working areas to provide sufficient light levels. Next please. The lighting strategy is to contain all light in the bridge while avoiding light pollution to the scalying water. Next slide please. Next slide please. The bridge slows gently, allowing the necessary turn to access the flow home development on the west side and the marine highway east side. Next slide please. Next slide please. All associated inspirations are being planned. Instead of using existing elements of the Uruguayan, the approach is in search of new conditions, one that complements, more than an extension of the realm found in the downtown side of the sexual language of the CN development, it's a third component. Next slide please. The only basic function of connecting points need to be, and thanks to the commitment of very very involved today, we believe that this bridge comes closer to accomplishing something representative for Spanish and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does that conclude our presentations, uh, staff?
Uh, this is Susan here, um, yes, that's the conclusion.
Then, uh, we'll, uh, open up for questions from council at this time, is my understanding. Uh, councillor Herford.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Um, the, uh, I have a couple, a couple of questions here. In your presentation, you mentioned that the, the bridge slows gently, and I was wondering what the, um, is there a quote, slows gently? I was wondering what the maximum slope was, I'm thinking with an eye towards, um, accessibility, um, and, um, from the images, it does appear to slow gently, but is someone giving a percentage of that grade?
Uh, yeah, we, we're sticking below a five cent grade in order to be able to have a continuous slope without the need for landing.
Okay, thank you, and I have a couple others, that's all right, councillor?
Please, yes.
Thank you, um, and then, um, how was, uh, it was great to be taken through how the, um, how the, uh, the landscape and then the purpose was all integrated into the, into the design, and I'm curious how, um, one of the elements that was missing to me was the wind. Do you take any consideration into how we're going to shelter the people as they go across this, uh, east-west, um, bridge in a notorious north-south wind condition?
That's a good question, and we're here from aspect. Um, in the next phase of the design, we're planning to engage, uh, wind, uh, wind study to occur, and then at that point, you know, we'll, we'll garner more information on effect of wind on the structure primarily, but then, you know, tripling down to tech experience and maybe, um, into certain aspects of the design that we can use to shelter people. But it's a good point to be looking to, into future phases.
Yeah, I think, I think that everything along this area needs to be sort of looked at like we're on a, uh, a moving cruise ship or something and creating air pockets where it's pleasant to spend time. Um, those bump outs look, um, look great, but I'm thinking of actually sitting out there and, and, you know, uh, being able to hold on to my, my hat on, uh, on one of our glorious, uh, sunny summer afternoon. Um, and I guess the other end of the spectrum is, um, just sort of treatment during winter, whether that's snow removal, and I see within open grade is used as the, the, um, sort of when we get underfoot, but, uh, I'm curious if the snow is meant to just sort of go through that, or how, um, and if we're, um, generally all that's, all that's annual, whether that's somewhere to, if we are, do you need to plow it, if the snow needs to end up somewhere? If, 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 this, uh, what consideration I was given?
Yeah, for next stages of design, we'll be getting into that in more detail. Uh, we're expecting the snow to accumulate on that, that gradient, it's quite closely spaced, so, um, plowing would be the first logical option. Uh, we've talked about heat tracing it, and there's obviously maintenance and environmental implications associated with that, so, it is on the radar, um, regardless of the deck structure, you're going to have to deal with that, that snow in some manner, so, um, in moving to a solid deck, we may be under similar challenges in how to, how to deal and mitigate the snow, um, but it is, uh, it has been considered up to this point.
Thank you, when we're just like looking at operating costs of this, of this bridge, having the staff, and I understand all those, all those pieces, I'm just concerned about needing a, a new piece of equipment and over somewhere to, um, as much as the, the sort of ends of the bridges have been, have been, uh, considered outside of the scope on the truck side, on the other side, we'll make sure we have room to put this, you know, we're going to plow a hundred meters by five meter width or whatever, whatever that is, um, and those are design elements I don't really see in, uh, you know, or, uh, installed in various, uh, smaller complex and almost, so, um, and I want to make sure the district doesn't need to buy new equipment to be able to, to be able to perform that task, um, but, anyways, I'll leave, I'll leave it there, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor, councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, I have a few questions, uh, contextual questions, I think probably for staff, so I'm curious, um, when the CFC was negotiated, granted that this is a little bit of a historical question, was it always envisioned that this was going to be a lift-operated bridge that we would have to, uh, maintain the operation for?
Dave, if I may, I can take that question. Uh, through the chair, yeah, for the time of resuming, um, we were aware that the mountain blind channel up to the CN rail bridge was a navigable, navigable channel, uh, so if a better structure were to roll with it, um, we would have to provide unimpeded access to marine users, so, we didn't know that, um, that some sort of lift or swing moving mechanism bridge would be required.
Okay, thank you. Um, and a follow-up to that, I'm just curious why, I appreciate that it, it may not fully achieve the direct connectivity that would line up the OCP, but why simply a widening of the envisioned harbor bridge connecting Pemberton Avenue, um, wouldn't be considered as efficient as a pedestrian connectivity?
Uh, I can take that again, Dave Merrill. Through the chair, if that did come up in the renewal process, there were some questions of whether that might be the better option, um, for this future potential connection from Laurel to Pemberton Avenue downtown. Uh, there's a few reasons why we steer away from that, one being that the landing site on the Pemberton downtown side, the Pemberton avenue side, um, is fairly constrained from a space perspective, so widening the future bridge more than something we planned for, um, would pose challenges. Um, the planned bridge, Pemberton Bridge does include, um, bike and pedestrian, um, facilities, just not, you know, ample as this, as this bridge provides. Um, in addition, you know, that, that future bridge was going to be a busy potential truck route, uh, maybe not the most ideal, pleasant place to, to turn to the channel. Um, in addition, it's, uh, from both staff's perspective, from the active transportation connectivity perspective, but also for, uh, the proponents, the applicants' perspective, you know, getting people from the development, from water development, from the office to the heart of downtown, it wasn't, using Pemberton Bridge alignment, it wasn't really a direct connection, um, so it was, it was keen, it was keen to have that connection directly to the tourist street downtown.
Thank you. Um, a few further questions, if that's all, Richard.
Please, go ahead.
I appreciate the estimate on the operational costs, I'm curious what the estimated construction cost of the bridge are currently sitting at, recognizing that they're being brought by the applicants.
Yes, Susan, do you, would you want to respond to that?
Yeah, um, Susan started here through the chair. Uh, we, I did speak with the applicants recently about their construction cost. When the, um, CACs, the community amenities were being negotiated, the estimate at that time was three point five million, and the proponents have indicated that, um, that's up above five million at this point, and the additional costs, um, partly because the original was in two thousand seventeen dollars, but the, um, there had been additional costs related to, um, piling, putting the infrastructure in the back of line channel would, um, is not necessarily the, um, upper bridge aesthetics that are causing the additional costs, although they are attempting to bring forward a, a really high quality design.
Thank you. Are you, are you good, councillor Stoner?
I'm going to ask one more actual technical question about the bridge.
Please go ahead.
Uh, I'm just curious the height of the guardrails along the bridge, so if I'm walking along, how high up does the siding go?
The guardrail, one point four meter, which is co-prescribed for bike path, it would be one point one meters if you weren't, you know, put bikes on that bridge.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Stoner, I have mayor Elliot on the list next. Then followed by councillor Vrenn. And councillor Pedding, thank you.
Thank you, chair. Um, one of the, um, the things in the document is that, uh, Transport Canada may entertain remote CCTV technology, um, but it's not complicated at this time. What's the trigger for being able to remotely operate the bridge?
Dave, so, the, the idea is that the bridge will be designed, constructed to have the ability to operate remotely. Um, the, that change could occur in the future if a, the district or whoever's operating the bridge would be comfortable with that type of, um, operation, you know, there's a lot of state rural markets, um, that are a lot easier to observe and uphold if you have somebody on site, you know, people hanging off the bridge, for example, um, so, you know, they're back to stabbing people, but that change could occur at one of those reviews in the future where after operating the bridge for a while, we could take this data, um, if we're not getting very many transits for available, we can say to Transport Canada, you know, we have, this is how we've been developing the bridge, we have this infrastructure in place where, and planned in place, this is how we could operate remotely, and it indicates Transport Canada to allow that mode operation. I'm not sure that the district would, like I said, be comfortable with that, but that option is available unless it is down loaded and peened, um, alternative to having somebody, having somebody at the bridge all the time.
Um, where are the pedestrian gates located? Couldn't tell from the drawings?
Uh, through the chair, go ahead. Thanks. Uh, the exact location is not, uh, entirely finalized, but the intention is to be, you know, approximately, if I had to get five meters or so back from the pivot point at, on each side of the, the double leaf drop, so, um, the intention there is to have people waiting for the bridge opening and closing in those bump out areas, if you recall from the, the drawings.
Yeah. Okay, so it's not like a, um, flying gate bridge kind of lane change where you have to make sure everyone's off the bridge before you?
No.
Where a lot of people standing there waiting.
Yeah, an interesting concept there is that the ten minute cycle time, if you have someone, the need to stop people from entering the bridge entirely, and someone just walked off with their first steps onto the bridge on one side, it would actually take them quite some time, you know, if they weren't moving very quickly, to cross the bridge, which would count against your cycle time, so there's an intent, an intent to keep people close, closer to the operation, operate, op, operational portions, so that you don't have to wait for people to, to walk off the bridge before opening.
Okay, um, are, is there dredging required to put the tiles in?
No, not as far as we're aware. Um, I can't speak entirely to the marine design or the flow home design, which may or may not require that.
Um, do you want to just look at the permits for a second, the operating parameters? There's some wording in there that confused me, um, and this is on page sixteen of seventy seven of our agenda, says remote operations are approved for this project, but may be considered at a future date. Did you notice that strange language? Cause the report says they're not approved, but then it said they are, but may be considered a future date, so I feel like there was typo in their documents there. Um, and then lower down when they talk about cycle time, um, it says cycle time refers to the time it takes to close the pedestrian gate, initiate the lift, allow the vessel to pass, close the lift, and close the pedestrian gate, and again, I believe they mean open the gate. So, if, if this is the sort of document that we're building by, they probably should correct their typos, just as a matter of dot and I, they're crossed keys as a federal agency, so I just wanted to bring staff awareness to that, that it's like quite accurate. Um, and then just from a technical design standpoint, um, how do we design this so that if it breaks, parts are available in Canada, like I'm, we're not sending away to Germany to replace like the one part that makes the bridge go up and down, like is that being taken into consideration?
Yes, um, the choice of the hydraulics, um, was, you know, that did play a big part of that, uh, and as far as the dependability, reliability, maintenance, replacement, um, there's double redundancy, or one could argue quadruple redundancy as far as the blockage of that navigable channel goes, that was, you know, a big, um, factor in Transport, Transport Canada's approval, in, as far as we would never be able to be broken down and be blocking that waterway, so we have the ability, in theory, to open one half of the bridge, should one half of the bridge not, um, be working, and then we also have the ability to open one half of the bridge with only half of the pistons that have been provided, so we're providing two pistons on either side of the bridge, you can open the bridge with one of those pistons in an emergency or a breakdown situation, and those pistons are, you know, common, relatively common, um, in the, in the mechanical world in, in North America, and should be readily serviceable and replaceable, and, and they were chosen for that reason.
Okay, and last question, can I manage this funding?
Please.
Um, in your estimated operating, um, budget, um, Mr. Merrill, for the first year, it talks about some contingency for maintenance, and conceivably, we would build up a bit of a reserve for this bridge, would we not? Um, and so that there was money there in case, I mean, your repair, like we wouldn't budget every year for an amount of money. Like, we wouldn't budget every year for an amount of money that we may not need for a brand-new bridge?
Through the chair, you're correct. The estimate that we provide here was sort of a takeout and amortization, so providing annual cost for it. I might let Bob Smith speak to this if he were to provide a bit more details about how we may approach the operating and maintenance costs for this bridge.
Afternoon, Eric Also. Through the chair, we did exactly what you are suggesting, Mayor Elliott, and we put $30,000 in as our contingency. There's been a few challenges with this, it's a bit out of our area of expertise. But one of the things we did manage to do with the subject matter expert yesterday, and what they suggest is that you establish a long-term relationship with the people that build the hydraulics, and they'll be the ones that can do that maintenance and do our annual repairs. If those components fail in our experience, there is a cost, but it's manageable. It's not that one piece from Germany that needs to wait for months and months. Typically, our hydraulic stuff is pretty standard, and we would definitely want to see that that would happen on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Counselor French?
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering about the operational end of this. Would a number of district exonerate staff members be trained and able to operate the lift?
Through the chair, Bob Smith again. In my estimate, I plan to do this with district staff. It may contrast this out. I have a short timeline to get the numbers together, so I did it with the numbers that I knew. So yes, we would estimate that we'll have to have four people trained at the minimum, so that we've got that coverage. There's some specialty issues or concerns that we've got that we need to be trained around VHF radios, which adds the challenge a little bit. It's not like a cell phone or a pager, you need to be able to communicate and certify these bills. So there's some training to it as well. We would want to just kind of throw somebody into that. So that was our estimate is four people trained.
Okay, and I'm thinking about the logistics of, if it needed to be opened at 2:00 AM and all four of those people are asleep, that could be challenging. So would there be a round clock coverage? Would there always be somebody on standby who could be there quick enough?
Through the chair, yes, we would have that. Similar to snowfalls or waterway breaks, we're 24/7 down here, and this would just be one more item that would be in that 24/7 regime.
Great, thank you, Chair.
Very good. Counselor Pedego?
Yeah, thank you. A few things. Do we care if people jump off the bridge? Do they want to jump in the water?
Design team, design.
Through the chair. Andrew, I'll just say something quick. The thought is that we would probably not want to do that. But Andrew, I don't know if you're taking something different into your consideration, design consideration?
Yeah, certainly we've thought about it through the design process. And short of, you know, creating a cage for people to pass this through, this bridge, we don't think there's any sustainable way of preventing it entirely, but we will be, you know, providing measures to strongly discourage people from jumping off the bridge. It will not be an easy thing for them to...
Yeah, I mean, just my, this is exonerate, and I can see people not only want to jump off the bridge, but also jump, you know, while going up on their bike and so on. So I think, you know, these have to be design considerations here in some way. I'm wondering how involved staff has been in the design considerations? I've spoken to a bit, but not quite directly, in terms of the balance of capital costs versus long-term operational costs. And, you know, I think our priority is to minimize those long-term operational costs, probably, but how are we making sure that balance is being struck and we're comfortable with?
Oh, sort of that. You know, we've been, district staff have been working very closely with the design team on this. We've had a couple of reviews now of the initial conceptual and preliminary designs. And we're making sure that, you know, the materials, the proposals, how, you know, the equipment, the operating equipment, all aspects of this bridge are going to minimize the costs that the district's going to incur in the forward for both operating, but also importantly, maintenance as well. So that's an ongoing thing. You know, we're looking, floating about from council on sort of materiality today, but we're definitely involving our public works department and the engineering department having to make sure that the materials, how this thing is built is going to be robust and not require a lot of maintenance in the future.
Okay, maybe a related question is, you know, I'm hearing that the capital costs have gone from 3.5 to 5 million for the proponents, and our operational costs, seeing $170,000, $300,000 a year, and I'm thinking up a lot of active transit infrastructure. So have we done a gut check and said, hey, if we spend the same amount of money elsewhere, do we get more people out of cars, more people walking? And, you know, cost benefit, is that really the best option in spite for everyone?
I'll respond. We have not, to this point, done an analysis. We've been sort of proceeding with the developer, with the design team on the bridge, for the purpose of part of the CAC, and looking to make this important connection that is, Susan pointed out earlier, you know, contemplating the OCP and road group connectivity, not just to the development, but to downtown residents as well as residents in Valdez.
Yeah, it just strikes me with COVID and then with, it seems, the numbers that are a fair bit beyond what what a number of people are expecting, I'm not sure. And just, there's been some talk about some things will be dealt with in later phases. Is only if someone can speak to, is that sort of voluntary work? Is, you know, what is secured is only what is proposed for phase 2B? Or how does that later stuff happen?
Susan might be able to best respond to this. But I believe you're referring to the sort of work, plaza, and sort of seaside walkways at the landing of the bridge? Is that what you're going to test with them?
It sounded like there's some wave finding and some, you know, public air type stuff, some signage, and then a few different things. I think in terms of covering for rain or wind resilience, those sorts of things would be, I think, at a later stage, so I'm wondering where that gets addressed and how.
Through the chair, Susan Stratus here, I can speak to that. There are a number of interrelated pieces here with the bridge and the adjacent waterfront park and the future safe for plaza area on the waterfront landing site. We are working with the applicants on a signage package. They are preparing a comprehensive sign plan for the entire site on the waterfront landing site. That will include some informational signage to the bridge based on the district's wave finding themes and standards that have been developed. And then there is some internal signage of waterfront landings that often develop features within their site that we're handling a bit separately. So that comprehensive sign plan is one thing that will come forward to staff as a minor development permit or approval. We, you know, I think we're some distance away from looking at that for any approvals because the bridge work needs to proceed first. The other major related civil versus waterfront park that connect, you know, it's going to be a connecting point. Because the plaza and the landing area around the bridge is safe for development, we will have details on how that's supposed to work until the safe for village area comes forward. You know, I mentioned in the beginning, that was, that's kind of one technical difficulty everyone's wrestling with because the bridge has been advanced before that area has been fully designed. So I understand that the applicants are going to be taking interim connections, so people can connect safely to the eternal public roads within the building and connect to waterfront parks. But lots of other details will come forward with the safe for development permit.
I'll add quickly to what Susan did. I think there are still elements of this bridge design that need to be finalized, and so we didn't bring the design forward in its final stage. We wanted to leave it open to council's input. And so things like consideration for wind and the snow removal, those are the things that will be worked out after this meeting. Later fees, I think, looking at them, just meant that, you know, it's going to be after this meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's it for my questions and comments, which I can come back to later.
Very good. We will have round comments. I'm just going to go to Counselor Burford. Have you had a quick question, a supplementary question at this time? Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I was curious about, sorry, I had it highlighted here. One of the things that I haven't heard about was the airdraft gauges as part of this, well, to be located in the channel. And what would that look like? Where would they be located? And is that already been set up? Or is it in the name of the drawings?
Those have been included as part of the Transport Canada approval. There's fairly detailed diagrams on where they're located, the dolphin split in the channel to guide the traffic through the appropriate channel. We have included it in the package because we were focusing mainly on the effects of the superstructure, but it has been considered and is part of the approval of Transport Canada's grant.
Thank you. Counselor Stone, did you have a quick supplemental question?
Thank you, Chair. I'm curious about process, whether something like this would go to ATP and when? And/or if it was directed to the public art committee that is not yet struck in any way, shape, or form? Or is this kind of the only body that is providing input on aesthetics and material?
Through the chair, Susan Stratus here. You know, maybe to add this, but there is no formal development application associated with the bridge. And even council approval is technically not required because there is no development permit. That's why we're bringing this forward for more informal discussion.
Thank you. I have some questions on my own, as we are over time, but I think we will extend for to satisfy ourselves with comments on this very important project. I have some questions on my own. I'm going to try to bundle them and still hopefully be clear enough. These are, I'll start with the transit provisions for transit watercraft through. Now, we are going to have to presumably consider transit also for dredging and construction equipment in the future. We have, sorry, flow homes that will be installed further up the channel. We have potentially dredging needs for those flow homes. We have the new bridge that's already been referred to, Laurel Wood to Pemberton. And we have a marina, which is a rather old one that does need some revamping. It certainly has some issues as regards some major renovation. And we may see new investments in other facilities further upstream. So with that, and the need to consider transport of not only equipment, but materials and crinage, I'm concerned about the width of the bridge. Now, I understand it's 14.5 meters, 47.5 feet, which is quite tight. And for any barge, and we've had barge, dredge barges in the channel, parked there for many years, and they were 50 feet wide. So the questions that I'll ask, and I'll just bundle them up here if you like, has consideration been given to what equipment might be needed to transit through this, in addition to recreational boats, of course? Secondly, for this equipment, is the clearance straight up? That is, if there's something like dredge spuds to come through? Is that, what does that clearance look like? Is it clean, straight up? And are we able to consider longer vessels, like a 150-foot barge coming through? Because as I see from the diagram, there's a lot of marina infrastructure already sketched in. And finally, the protection of the abutments. And here I'll refer again to the concept plans. There are designs for interpretive panels or interpretive signage on the abutments. So the question is about protection. So go back to the beginning. What types of equipment are we considering coming through other than recreational boats? Is the clearance designed for all scenarios of equipment? And including length of equipment? Can we dismantle the infrastructure if we need to? That is, the marina infrastructure. And the protection of the abutments? Is it a consideration to look after this today, rather than in future? Of course, at the district costs in future, if we need extra protection in future for transit of equipment? I'll leave it at that. I hope I have been clear in painting that picture for Mr. Marrow, perhaps.
Thank you. I will provide a slot to these comments, and then maybe some of the design team could chime in if they have any supplemental information. So with respect to the types of equipment that we anticipated currently being in this bridge, there was a navigational assessment report completed in 2018, which involved Transport Canada's navigation and protection program. And so it was developed by the consultants, marine consultant, who was sort of contemplating how this bridge would work. And Transport Canada staff were involved in the review and acceptance of that report. So within that report, Transport Canada MDP staff actually did their own consultation and research with local marine users and contractors. And they determined, there was originally a more narrow opening proposed, and that was based on other requirements for transits of sailboats and what have you. I can't remember exactly what the reference guides, guidance documents were. But the MDP staff actually determined that a dredge charge would be the largest piece of equipment that would need to go through here. As you say, a 50-foot wide barge with a 50 here or there, there are smaller dredge barges that are available within the vicinity that could easily transit that with, you know, a buffer on either side. So it was actually, that width requirement came from Transport Canada staff who did their research on what types of equipment could practically go through there. And as you mentioned, the flow homes as well. That width would be sufficient to bring flow homes in and out through that open. With respect to the vertical clearance, I believe, and I will have to follow up on this unless somebody on the call has more better information, I believe that clearance is vertical. So I will, but I will need to double check on that. With respect to the length for longer equipment traveling through there, that's an excellent point that you raised. And it's obvious that we can have the design team look at moving forward to see what types of water, marine, or any other type of equipment might need to go through there, and whether it can actually sit based on the alignment of the channel and the constraints on either side. I know through the approval process of Transport Canada, Transport Canada staff was very set to the issue of constraints of the channel, the valuable channel. And so they spent a great deal of time looking at what is currently there as far as marina infrastructure, the future potential marinas, the future dock structures. And their review, they were satisfied that with the infrastructure in place and was planned as part of this development and development across the channel, that transits could occur unimpeded. With respect to your last point about the protection... Uh, with respect to your last point about the protection of the abutment, um, another some point, and that's something that we've raised, staff have raised, uh, internally with the design team moving forward. So we will, um, again, sort of those, those technical details are currently in the design phase and staff is working with the, the consultants following those details. But that's one we've absolutely identified and will ensure is integrated into the design.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. As a little bit of a follow-up, one of my overall concerns would be that we would, we would wish to avoid, um, future co, extra costs for the district, for example, in district infrastructure further up like a bridge, um, in the decisions we make today so that we're not, because some of these things, the gymnastics and logistics of getting through a narrow transit will sometimes be more costly. So that we'll, we will need to keep that in mind and those trade-offs, present versus future costs. Another question I have perhaps is more for Susan Stratus, and that is concerns the interpretive signage and elements program that the architects have also referred to, as has Councilor Stoner. Councilor Stoner has highlighted that we are, uh, having an ongoing discussion through our arts, cultural heritage strategy about planning for who coordinates, uh, these programs on the part of the district. And it is my opinion that this bridge project should be considered in that context. Um, that is the administration and review of how we plan these cultural elements. Uh, recently, New Westminster has undertaken a very interesting program. Uh, I've visited Oslo, Norway, which has a comprehensive, also like New Westminster, comprehensive cultural interpretive plan for their harbor redevelopment, looking at past, present and future and in-depth New Westminster First Nations culture as well. So my question is, um, how can we, or maybe this is a suggestion, I'll leave that miss to Miss Stratus, how to, how do we approach the administration of the, uh, this design work? Obviously, it will involve local input as well as the talent we'll bring in from outside.
Uh, Chair, just to the last point on the arts and culture strategy, I will just have to follow up with, um, Jonas Villaniscus to answer the meeting. I, I don't have a, an answer to that. It's a really good point, and I, from the work so far with the applicants, I think they're very open to suggestion and to what that signage of those interpretive elements might look like. So, um, I'll also follow up and answer this meeting.
Thank you. I did have a couple of other questions. Um, the provisions for the future docking that might be built in front of the Huonier Park. There had been a couple of different versions of the bridge design that we looked at in, in fact, in previous presentations on the park dike design. Uh, Mr. Merrill has referred to the dike design, but there are also future plans or there will need to be dock designs there. In fact, council has been approached by a couple of different interests regarding future use of docks there. So are we, uh, able to take into account, uh, in our design of the, on the Sirocco side, uh, in a, a cost-effective solution for installing new docks in front of our park in future in relation to this bridge? Are there any considerations there, engineering design?
Yes, I'll, I'll speak to that quickly, and I actually, um, Mr. Rolston could jump in and provide some information as well. So as, um, the design team Andrew mentioned earlier, the bridge design all along has been, um, the, the bridge design so far has been, uh, taking into consideration what that future, um, dike will look like potentially. And also the fact that we need to transit underneath the bridge with some sort of, um, floating, um, dock. We don't exactly know what it looks like right now, but the, we're definitely, um, integrating those designs and hopes into this preliminary design moving forward and detailed design. But maybe Mr. Rolston can speak to, uh, what, uh, Huonier Park, um, the design for that and how we'll integrate, uh, in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Rolston.
Chair. Uh, thank you, Dave. Um, Councilor Anderson, we are in the design process right now, the preliminary design process for the Huonier Park sea dike. And as part of that project, we are incorporating designs for water access. Um, we have included in the RFP to undertake design for two water access, and one at the south end of the park and one at the north end of the park. Um, this is a lot evolving. Um, we had anticipated that the Sirocco development would be, um, constructing their, uh, dock to their float home, uh, to this south of the pedestrian bridge, and the access would be provided underneath the bridge to their future float home development. Um, that may change, and so we are going to be working with them in order to, um, potentially modify water access in the north end of the park. Um, so that, that is obviously being worked on and it's in progress right now. Um, staff do intend to come and present, um, a conceptual design for council endorsement on the Huonier Park sea day, including water access on July 21st, uh, at which point we'll be speaking to Councilor Olson and can provide, uh, further updates on, uh, water access options.
Thank you, Mr. Rolston. I'd like to turn over to comments from council. We are over time as I, as I've mentioned already, but we'll make a quick round of comments and then I'll try to have a, a summary as well. Mayor Elliott. Uh, Mayor Elliott, your mic is off.
Um, just one question before I, uh, my comment. And that is, in our last council to council meeting with First Nations, they mentioned the desire to see more of their stories told in the public realm. And I know in this project briefing that designers were sort of looking at celebrating our industrial past, but it is important to consider, um, the nation's eye and where this bridge is landing, which is at Huonier Park. Um, and also the names we choose to use. Um, so instead of Mount Garibaldi, just kind of, just saying, Hafbund, Akasum. Um, so I think we have to start turning our attention to seeing the language and some of their stories, and if there's a way to weave that into the design of this bridge, whether that be as a landing or along the bridge, but I think it's important to at least, um, work with the nation, um, on, on signage, um, or a story that might want to be told in this area. Overall though, I think, um, you know, I was on council when, when we approved it as a CAC. I think this is an essential part of revitalizing downtown and providing that easy connectivity east-west. Um, I think it's, uh, I like the design so far. Um, my, my biggest concern is making sure those operating costs are, um, are manageable as that neighborhood develops, so we add these taxpayers to cover those costs, but, um, making sure this is a beautiful, um, and functional bridge, because I think it will be a, a wonderful landmark, um, as part of, uh, an important part of sort of the visual context of our community over time. Um, I, I like the direction it's going right now. I just think that, that missing piece for me is around incorporating the First Nations, uh, history or stories in, into this design in some way.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so a few things, but I think I'll address too quickly, uh, just wondering about covered options. So I'm thinking not just about winds, but the rain and so on. We have started to ask people with buildings to make sure there's sufficient overhangs and, and thinking about, it does rain here, it's not always nice. And I think if we, uh, you know, proceed with this, we want it to be used, well-used all the time, not just when it's night. So let's make sure, uh, we achieve that. Um, and then maybe to contradict myself somewhat, um, I, during the day, and then just acknowledge that I'm not an architect or anything like that, but, um, my sort of reaction to the visual appearance of it is, it, it seems a bit rustic and it fits in well, I think, it, uh, with the existing, uh, look and feel that's down there, uh, in the daytime. Uh, and it's sort of, um, it kind of melts in from my perspective. The nighttime view of the light, so it kind of takes the opposite tack almost and says, hey, look at me. And I think the word beacon was mentioned. And I'm just a little bit uncertain about what I see as a bit of a contradiction, and maybe that is, maybe there's a different sort of look and feel at night versus the day. But I do know I hear a lot of concern from people that being able to stargate and see the nighttime sky. And so I'm wondering about minimizing the visual impact even much further. Though it's just a bare necessity to get across safely, but you could stand in one of those bumpouts and look at the stars at night, uh, listen to the, the sound of the, the water and so on. Um, uh, one other thing I had, I guess just my, I, I do really appreciate the value of having a, an active transit connection there in that area, and I think that is very valuable. But those costs are getting pretty big, and I think we do have to be very careful if, if that is the best way we can increase active transit in our community. Um, and, you know, everything going on in the world right now, it maybe works just in a little bit of thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Stoner.
Thank you, Chair. Um, or I start. Um, so in terms of, of feedback directly on the bridge and the direction it's going, um, I think that these sorts of statement pieces are challenging, and I am not an architect, but I, I personally am not super favorable of the designers' way of coming up. I think that the materials are cold, um, it feels kind of rustic, but also kind of unwelcoming. Um, I also have concerns about the functionality and how bikes and pedestrians will interact on the bridge, recognizing that it is a four meters wide, but, um, if we are looking at this as an active transportation network, then you have bikes that are trying to get to downtown and get to work, um, as well as people who are using the bumpout as quote-unquote Instagram moments. And it's unclear to me how those two vehicles interact in, um, by directional four meters of width. Um, so those are some concerns that I do have just about the structure or the design of it currently. Agree with the mayor's comments around being really cognizant of where this is, uh, where the bridge is connecting to and from and, um, being very cognizant of, uh, how we use this opportunity to tell the story of the, of the historic pieces of the land and how it connects back to the First Nations. I would like to see this go to ADP for some feedback, um, since I'm not an architect and I don't have the broad view of, uh, how this is fitting in with the overall design on what's going on on either side of the bridge. And I think some further refinement from those folks at that table could be helpful. Um, and then just more generally, I share, Councilor Penningill, concerns about the cost of this bridge, um, recognizing that this has been negotiated in the remodeling and as part of the GRCAC contribution, but those costs are getting really high. And I think that we do need to do a gut check on whether this is still the appropriate way to be spending five million dollars up, uh, up to three hundred thousand dollars a year in operational costs, which is by far and above maybe one of the most expensive ones that we might be adding to our regular budget for a single piece of infrastructure. Um, and to that end, I could simply see bikes going around using Pemberton, and we have this small cable ferry that goes across. And there, I feel like there are other ways that we can start to think about how we connect one side of the water to the other that doesn't require a five million dollar bridge. But, um, I may consider putting a motion on the floor after comments if, uh, if council would be willing to consider that in terms of reconsideration for direction of the bridge generally.
Thank you, Councilor Stoner. Uh, other comments? I will, oh, Councilor French, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I agree with the thought that, um, maybe more First Nations, um, reflection, uh, be involved in this project. Uh, I'd like the idea of the arts community providing input and agree that there could be value in the ADP reviewing this project. Uh, the, the lighting that I see in the, um, uh, early sketches, uh, I, I worry like, uh, Councilor Penningill, that there might be some interference with, uh, viewing the nighttime sky. Um, maybe that lighting could be toned down to make sure that when one is crossing that bridge, one can see the stars. Uh, generally, I, I, I like this look, and, uh, the project has been a long time in coming. I'd like to see us get on with it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilor Herford.
Thank you. Um, for this, uh, I'm having a hard time with, uh, seeing a CAC package negotiated by a previous, uh, council through to, through to attend. I see the benefit of the bridge the whole night, I reported that, to that discussion if it were to happen, but considering we're going to, um, as I stand now, we're, we're moving forward with the, uh, the bridge, my comments on that would be, uh, I would like to see ADP, uh, be involved with that. I've been impressed with their, with their, um, their work on other, other projects and, um, and they are, um, you know, and, and far more of an expert in the, experts in the matter. Um, and I would assume at that time that they would be, uh, taking into account, um, you know, winds, uh, as a design consideration, um, amongst, uh, whatever other factors they would have. So I would like to see that, uh, see this project future through that lens, and I'll, uh, I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you. Uh, I will then offer a few comments on my own, and we'll see if we have time for a quick summary as well. Councilor Penningill has raised the issue as, as among others regarding the active transportation context. And, uh, I think this is very important. I think it's important that we, that we develop a nuanced picture. I am a resident of Valley Cliff Hospital Hill area, and I am a pedestrian. And, uh, I think east-west connectivity issues that have been, these neighbors have been working on them for fifteen years exactly, uh, because that's when the corridor trail issue got, the project got started. Now, I think we need a clear picture because we have to identify priorities and to place this bridge within that context of competing priorities. It is, uh, there are large investments that have and will go in, uh, on the other routes through the Highway 99 Bridge. We will see investments with the Scott Crescent development and other investments on the Valley Cliff Trail. Those routes are much more convenient for the majority of Valley Cliff and all hospital adult for schools pedestrian movement. They are also, uh, for a lot of even cyclists, that intersection or the, that route through the highway bridge will be the one that's most convenient. It's not that people won't enjoy and seek out and come to use this bridge to get downtown and maybe even to schools, but it is not going to be the most convenient route A to B. We need to keep that nuanced picture in mind as we contemplate these investments. The reason why it's not convenient is because the Clark Drive Highway 99 intersection is remote for most of us, whereas the highway intersection is closer to get to, and it always will be that way. We're constrained by water. Um, so with, having said that, I'd like to just touch on some issues that have come up, and that is wind and rain. And also another one is drainage. Uh, we have another bridge, namely the highway bridge I've just described, which is an important pedestrian conduit, and it has drainage issues. And we do have rain. I'm shocked to, to see that during the last twelve months, we had two hundred and forty-three days of rain. So we need to design for this, and drainage, it, it sounds like this problem may not come up with the approach that's being taken, but it is one to consider, and of course, safety with the, with the surfacing. Uh, wind has been brought up by Councilor Herford, among others. It is a real consideration, and, uh, I wonder whether there are some mesh solutions, but as, uh, Mr. Villaniscus has told us, we're still in progress as regards these detailed design issues. Vandalism, it, it appears to me with the proposed design, rather favorable as, as regards mitigating against that. We don't have large surface planes that might be used for, for that type of mischief, but it is a consideration and should be. Um, I would like to then offer a little bit of a summary. I'll go quickly, but I hope it might be of use to staff to run by some issues that we've come upon consensus on or that have been key issues identified, starting with the need to do a wind study and a, and an examination of sheltering issues given our, our weather conditions. This is one I understand that staff and, and the design team are looking ahead to. So the importance of that. Secondly, uh, we do not want to, if we can avoid it, need to buy new equipment on the part of the public works department for the maintenance, especially during snow removal or for snow removal. So if we can plan for that as well to spare us- So if we can plan for that as well to spare us new equipment that might be needed. Thirdly, we see that cycle times for users is, has been discussed this afternoon, and that we give consideration to that. It sounds like good consideration has been given, but traffic and pedestrian traffic, to see that that can be well managed. We have operating guidelines, an operating guidelines document, fourth item here, operating guidelines document, as Mayor Elliott points out, if we need to look as regards wording, we want to be sure that that document is crisp and clear. We've also noted that on the part of Public Works, that good relations need to be built with our vendors and our contractors so that the district can work with this thing as efficiently as possible ongoing in the future. We have also agreed that we must look at the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm coming back to the point that I made, and that is that we need to be careful about planning for transit through this bridge of construction and dredging equipment and other miscellaneous equipment in future, and make sure that our designs, including that the Marina configuration, are going to be able to accommodate that. And last couple of points here. There is general consensus that it would be a good idea to have this project be reviewed by Advisory Design Panel. There has been concerns raised about night sky impacts. And there are, I'll come back to Counselor Stoner's latter suggestion, but I'd like to just come back to the idea of the cultural interpretive elements that will be included in this. These are, I think, a good consensus that this is very important. There is a suggestion that this needs to be part of a bigger plan or context consideration, consultation, including, of course, the Squamish Nation. But I'd like to also point out two things, that the industrial history of this channel is also part of the Squamish Nation history, and most of those folks have worked on that channel for over 100 years, those families. So that is also part of their history here to keep in mind, as well as in Squamish, we have a community of about 2,000 Sikh persons of Sikh heritage. Their history in Squamish is intimately bound to the Sommel site. So this is a broader context that we need to have a look at as far as a cultural and heritage and arts approach to this bridge and other elements on both sides of the water. Now finally, I'll come back to Counselor Stoner's suggestion of other options, rather different ones, and Counselor Stoner has her hand up. Maybe I'll just go to you now and see what you wish to propose.
Thank you, Chair. And I think I have a direct question to staff first before I put a motion on the table. Recognizing that this bridge was captured as a CAC as prior rezoning, is from ongoing dialogue with the proponents and where we currently are, do you see any opportunities to revisit where we currently are, or are we fully entrenched in where, in the direction of this is going?
Mr. Villaniscus, would you be able to speak at this time on this?
Yes, thank you. I was hoping for that question. So this commitment to the pedestrian bridge in that location was secured in the land development agreement with both the property. So it's a matter that wouldn't have to be renegotiated and would need their agreement. I know that the applicants are banking on this bridge in their sale, so I'm not sure what the, you know, the applicant might be very much entrenched in this provision for this opponent and their buyers.
Thank you, Mr. Villaniscus. We do have a staff recommendation here. I'll read that recommendation, that council approve the following resolution, that council support the overall design concept proposed for the Victoria Street pedestrian bridge, and provides the following comments as we hopefully have summarized. Do we have somebody to move that motion? Okay, Mayor Elliott, is there a seconder? Counselor French, discussion? Mayor Elliott.
I repeat that it's really important to me that we respect the fact that this went through rezoning and a public hearing, and there was lots of support for this bridge. It is, I think we always have to have an eye to the practical nature of our active transportation route, which I see differently from this bridge, which is about extending the downtown and creating a really vibrant connection between the core of the west side and the east side, which I think is important to how our downtown evolves. And it isn't just about practicality, it is also about beauty. I do support the idea of this going through the ADP if council members feel that that's important. But to me, the discussion wasn't so much about the practicality of our active transportation route, but rather providing the ease of access across the Mount Combe Channel into downtown for the neighborhood and water font lining, and vice versa, because there is this phase four that will develop around the east side of this bridge. So to me, this is fundamental to how our downtown evolves, and we have no timeline for the bridge that goes across further up the Mount Combe Channel. We have no funding for that from other levels of government at this time. But we do have funding for this bridge, and I think the operating cost actually can be managed. It won't be as high as we see our ability to potentially manage this remotely, and also as we look at how transit happens, working with Transport Canada to adjust the requirements over time. So I think this is headed in the right direction. I think it's starting to reflect what the community wanted out of that bridge, and look forward to seeing it once it's been through a second round of detailed design.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Further comments? Counselor French.
Yeah, just quickly, when I think out to, when Sea and Sky is fully built out and populated, and then when the upper Mount Combe Line Channel, Scott Crescent, is developed, the folks living in those neighborhoods, I think they're going to really appreciate this access to the downtown, and will create a scenario for them where they're not feeling hemmed in by water on one side and highly on the other side of Sea and Sky. Yeah, like I said earlier, I'm looking forward to getting on with this.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. I won't be supporting the motion as is. I do appreciate that this had gone through rezoning, and so we are down the path, and I do appreciate that it's gone to public hearing and there was feedback provided. I think that as costs continue to escalate and the reality of what the operating cost charge might be, we do need to do a gut check on how much we value that specific connection. I do think that there are alternative ways, it seems simple, but a small cable ferry could really do the trick, and we see it often in places like Amsterdam, and it's not as consistent, it's not as reliable, you have to wait for it to get across. But it would be a portion, I think, or a fraction of the actual operating and total cost of construction, and then there could be a more permanent link in some of the other areas that we see further downstream. So I do feel like we are pushing hard on something that is really nice to have and not necessarily something that is really going to get us where this that we're trying to achieve in a long-term, financially sustainable way. So I won't be supporting this as is. But yeah, we'll see when it comes back, if it happens, if that happens. Thank you.
Counselor Herford.
Thank you. I'm having a hard time with this one, but given the randomness in this process, I really do think that this connection and an easy connection from, from sort of all sites east into the downtown is going to be of benefit to the community as a whole. I see that at public hearing, there was a lot of support for this bridge. I know we are saddled with the paying for it and a non-what basis portion, which I'm not entirely comfortable with, but I do think that, I do think that there's opportunity to hopefully bring down the operating costs as we, as we get some, hopefully gain the ability to operate this remotely. Yeah, and I'm curious to see, to me, this motion, my understanding of this motion, Mayor Elliott just said it included the ADP part, that's important to me. So that was part of our comments that were captured here and that were, okay. So I'll be, I'll be luckily supporting this motion at this time.
Very good. Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, I think we're debating this one, it's a tough one, and I think I will not be supporting this at this point. I think there are, from my perspective, some design issues, and the cost is part of that for me. I know we did agree to this, so, you know, I'm not thinking that this is the opportunity to force a complete rethink and sort of scrap the bridge outright, but I think, you know, there have been a number of comments made that I think we want to go back and look at anyway, in terms of the de-precising this and wind and rain and so on. And so I hope it's an opportunity to do some of that, and I think, you know, some consideration of the cost piece should be part of that examination, even if this proceeds. I hope this conversation will influence the next iteration of that.
Thank you. I'll make my own comment here, and we'll wrap it up. I am very sympathetic to Counselor Stoner's position with respect to looking at other options, small cable ferry, that was actively discussed years ago. However, previous councils and two subarea planning processes since 2008 have taken us deep down this path. And I feel also, and from the beginning of proposals for this site that began in 2005 with the purchase from the Sommelie Company, I've been concerned that it might end up being an isolated subdivision of Squamish, more connected to Vancouver, with a lot of commuters and logistical and water boundaries and other issues, and not as integrated as it should be with the rest of the community. So for that reasons, I feel strongly that we need to give, it's going to be costly for all of us, including the district, ongoing in the future, that this is an important consideration, that this neighborhood be well-integrated with the rest of the community. So I will be supporting the motion, and I will call the question, all in favor for the recommendation? And opposed? Counselor Stoner, Counselor Penningill opposed. The motion is carried, a vote of four to two. Thank you. And I will then ask council what your pleasure is. We've gone over time, but I think that it has been an important issue and a topic to spend some time with. The pesticide use and potential ban for cosmetic purposes, we can address this after a break or before, would you like to continue with that presentation? Any suggestion? Short break or?
My preference is to take a break.
All right then. Why don't we try a five-minute break? We will have another break then before we get into another bigger topic later on in the afternoon. Thank you. So we'll recess for five minutes. Welcome back again to the--
Somebody's got too many, needs to mute. Ian, is it you?
Is it Ian?
Nope, not Ian.
If you can just watch our muting, it sounds like I'm okay at this time, but welcome back at any rate to the committee of the whole meeting on June 9th, and we're to receive a presentation on pesticide use and potential ban for cosmetic purposes. And we have with us for the presentation Carolyn Michikin and Chris Wickham from our Engineering and Environment Department respectively. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. Do we have a, we have a presentation coming up, Ron?
Yep, sure. I thought you were going to introduce you guys.
So at the moment, I was asked to give an update on where we are with our pesticide regulations in practice within the district. And so let's give a very brief overview, and we'll be able to take any questions. I brought along Carolyn Michikin is our Environment Coordinator and has a lot of technical experience in this area, as well as is very involved in the invasive species program. She's closely related. Next slide. At the moment, the district does have a bylaw, the pesticide application, but it's a 1980 bylaw, basically just limited aerial application and requires a license for other applications, but it attempts yards. So it's almost the opposite of what many other municipalities do, which we'll get into in coming slides a little bit. Our, we do also have official US policy from roughly the same era that limits pesticide use on public land. In practice, we don't use any pesticides on public land, except for a very limited use for a couple of invasive species that we contract, the CAC and invasive species council or district to apply. Next slide. So just to touch briefly on invasive species, because these two items are linked. So Japanese knotweed in particular is a significant challenge in the district. It's very aggressive and damaging to infrastructure and also to central stream banks, which is obviously very important in the district, given our environmental values. And glyphosate is used to combat the knotweed. It's used, just a very targeted use with a hand sprayer by certified individuals using proper equipment, or sometimes by stem injection, which is even better. And so SISK is generally used, is doing the application of glyphosate, they follow the provincial best management practices. Next slide. So BC municipalities can ban most pesticides. There's good guidance from the province on that subject. They can do it on residential and municipal lands, and they can ban the use for outdoor trees, shrubs, flowers, ornate plants, and turf. Doesn't include pesticides that transmit human disease or agricultural or forestry transportation abilities. There are a number of other exceptions to what we can exempt. Over 20 BC municipalities do have restrictions, and many of them came in around, between 2008 to 2012. They're all quite similar and follow this provincial requirement. And many of them, most of them exempt invasive species, some exempt noxious weeds as well. There's various ways that have to handle, through this exception by law, through permit, sometimes through a motion from council, which obviously we would like to employ to our case, given the amount of knotweed gathering. So that's one nuance that would need to be looked at if we were to consider a ban. Next slide. The sale of pesticides, we cannot limit. We don't have the regulatory ability to do that from products. However, we may be able to require signage at a point of sale that describes the restrictions on these. I say may only because there aren't very many examples of that to products, and we have that legal review to understand the mechanisms to apply that. But there is at least one example of a product where that was required as in their bylaw. So this is a tricky one from an engagement standpoint, just in the sense that it affects a great number of people in the district, and we're literally getting in people's backyards, which people like to be able to voice their opinion on. And also, when we get into a bylaw like this, of course, we like to bring people along and journey. So engagement, part of that engagement and feedback from people is also about getting aware of the reasons that council believes that a new bylaw or change of bylaw is a good idea. And of course, it also affects retail and landscaping company use and others. So there's a very broad engagement. Interestingly though, we're very close to bringing our invasive species bylaw to the community as a whole. convene the whole, to get council endorsement to begin engagement on that bylaw, which affects all the existing stakeholders and even has some interaction on because of potential exemption from basis. So it would make sense if there was interest in council in proceeding with developing a bylaw to ban pesticides, we could work both the engagement programs together as a single project, which would take a lot of time and effort for people. And of course, at the end of the day, once a bylaw is in place, we would spend, need to spend a lot of time, a lot of resources on initial education, and that would be initially the focus. There would be an opportunity to enforce it today, although that's a tricky thing to do as far as knowing what exactly is in something's free law, whether it's a banned substance or not, it's a bit of a tricky thing to enforce. But it's, so we would concentrate initially on on public orders. Next slide. And that's all I have.
Questions, Council? That's Counselor Reese?
Hope you're on mute. Still muted.
You need to mute, Counselor Reese, if you may ask you to start starting again?
Nope, still muted.
Still on mute?
Sorry, no, good God. I was under the impression that there was already a restriction on the sale, not through municipality, but at the provincial level, where certain pesticides were restricted to the sale only to commercial operators, commercial landscaping companies and things of that nature, and residential, individual residential owners, for example, could not buy. Can you comment on that? Is that correct?
I'm not aware of that. It would make sense of different, based on based on health and safety, and if there's a different pesticide to be treated differently. I'm not aware of the regulation. Are you aware, Miss Michikin?
I I am not, but that's something that we can certainly follow up on.
Well, I can only say I couldn't have dreamed that one up, and so it must be out there somewhere, because I could have sworn I heard that a couple of years ago, that there were the restriction on that. So I'll leave it to staff to be looking into that. Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Peddigo?
Yeah, a couple. We can't stop utilities and forestry and so on from using this agricultural usage. Can we require that they post signage about about their use and when they're using it and so on?
Through the chair, I don't believe we have the ability to propose anything on, I think it is often in practice to do so, but we don't, we don't have jurisdiction over those utilities by law, by ways, et cetera.
Okay, and if their use, like if we sort of detect, you know, goes beyond their right to way and so on to private or municipal property, do we even have any jurisdiction as of still for provincial, or we have no authority still?
I don't know the answer to that. Do you know, Miss Michikin?
Through the chair, I, I'm not certain on that either, but I would anticipate that we would have jurisdiction if their pesticide applications are unintentionally ending up on district land or on private land. That's that's something we can follow up on as well.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned that these rules are actually quite typical in a lot of municipalities in DC. So I'm wondering, I guess, sort of a two-parter, you know, I guess it's been done so many times, if we could sort of fast-track the sort of thing, we want to pursue it, and we can look through all their examples to know how it goes. And then I guess, in relation to that, do we have any sense from them if it's had an impact on use in those communities and driving use down at all?
I can respond to the first one through through the chair. Yes, I think it is a fairly well-traveled road. The interaction with invasives is one area that there's a lot of different paths we have to put our heads to a little bit. But yes, we we should be able to get this this bylaw done faster than we normally would, essentially by marrying it up, bringing it along the same with the invasive bylaw. And I guess, I guess by that, I would mean, we would be looking to do, see, see council, hopefully in late July or early September, to go over the invasive bylaw, and then do public engagement on both after that, if there is a direction from from council to do a pesticides bylaw. And then if all goes well, by the end of this, of 2020, be able to have bylaws before council for readings.
Thank you. Senator Elliott?
Thank you. I think that's part of my my question is, could we not bring forward a bylaw on banning pesticides quickly, and then do the engagement along with the invasive species piece later? So like, one is engagement, the other one is education, but they're going hand in hand? I just don't understand the benefit of waiting. We know the harm that these chemicals do, multiple by them in summer.
I think that through the chair, with the time would take even to largely duplicate another jurisdictions bylaw, if we were just to sort of declare, declare the bylaw and work on education afterward, as you say, to get that step, we would still need to put a fair amount of thought into how to work on invasive exemption. We'd have to look at our staff, our, you know, how their current work plan. We have to shuffle some things around. It takes a couple of weeks to get our unitary work at council through, and we need a legal review. But I can't see, I'm just talking, sorry, I sound like I'm stumbling, because I'm trying to be mental math, count weeks in my head. I can't see getting that bylaw in front of the council before before the August break. And then, as you point out, it's really in the summer, spring and summer that people are less of using these chemicals. So I think we, I think that they, we would have missed that, we knew by now, and so I don't know. If so, we could still do that. Or we can do the engagement before the bylaw, in case it's enforced with the bylaw, in some sense. And I think, Miss Michikin wanted to add to my my answer.
Yes, please go ahead, Miss Michikin.
Thank you. Through the chair, I will add that given the number of people within the community that this bylaw would affect, I would suggest that it's important to go through engagements before we draft the bylaw, even if that engagement is being done at a level of inform on the IAP participation spectrum. That would value my recommendation to do engagements prior to bringing the bylaw forward for adoption.
Okay. But you would need direction from council today in order to bring this bylaw forward, is what you're saying?
Yes. At this point, we don't have the direction to bring this bylaw, so we're working our current work plan. So if you'd like us to adjust the work plan to bring the bylaw, then we would be looking for a resolution from council.
At this time, Council, we're receiving a memo, a report, but of course, the floor is open to any who wish to put forward a resolution here today. And other than that, do we have any further questions or comments at this time? Mayor?
Now, I'll note that staff bring forward a, a bylaw governing use of pesticides and herbicides in the district of Somalis to be considered at the same time as our invasion. Actually, I'm not going to recite to that. I'm just going to say to bring forward a bylaw governing the use of pesticides and herbicides in the district of Somalis on private property, on municipal land.
Is there a second for that motion? Counselor Stoner, are you a second here? Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Peddigo?
I will be supporting this, and I'm happy to see this coming forward, just with the comment that I will, that we are considering, you know, something to that contemplate use on agricultural lands, utility lands and so on, and if pesticides are migrating off, that there's something to to try and prevent that as well, and signage and so on, to basically minimize the use of these to the best we can.
Further comments? I'll offer my own at this time. I think I'm hesitant to to support this resolution. I will not be supporting the resolution, although as a matter to the cause, I'm concerned about the staff, time and resources and our prioritization of staff, time and resources, given that we have, I think, a need for more information, in my opinion. We have 14 municipalities who have gone down this road. What is their story? I would be interested to learn of their experience and how they have, what balance, what balance, what synergies have they found? With my background, not only in forestry, but in other fields, there is, it has always been an issue, however, that there is a gap in our regulation, and that is the gap that we are discussing, trying to approach here today. But the rest of these sectors are highly regulated. So I do think that there's, I am sympathetic to trying to address this gap. I think that the concerns regarding the other agencies may be beyond our jurisdiction, but also we shouldn't underestimate how much regulation is already there addressing those fields. So I will not be supporting the resolution mainly with my concern about the demand of staff, time and resources at this time, given that we have relatively little information worked with at this time. Are we ready to call a question, or are there further comments? Counselor Reese?
Thank you. I'm sort of with Counselor Anderson, except I'm not, I'm going to support the resolution at this point. I do have concerns. One is the outstanding question I asked, and what the answer to that might be, and whether there already is some restriction. But I am concerned about the enforceability of this, going into neighbors' backyards, how we, if we can't control the sale of it, and we don't have that power, whether anything we do is really going to have much effect, except for enough of staff time. So I do have that concern. And so at this point, I'm happy to see it go forward, but I may not be happy with the end result and take a different position at the end of the day. Thank you.
Further comments? Questions for staff? Last person for staff, then I'll call the question. All in favor? And all opposed to Mayor Elliott's motion? I'll be putting myself forward as opposed. Then the mayor, the resolution passes. Thank you very much, Chris and Carolyn. We will go straight into the next item and consider a break after, if that's okay with with council, and that will be the electrical vehicle charging infrastructure plan with Mr. Ian Pinkett, sign gavel.
Thank you very much, Counselor Anderson. Would you like me to get started?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right. So just for the interest of everyone's time, I recognize that you're running late. I'm going to go forward, go through some of the preamble quite quickly, but I do encourage you to ask questions and happy to clarify afterward. So we're here today to present about the community electric vehicle charging infrastructure plan. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of what we're going to be talking about. Again, I'm going to go over the backend matter pretty quickly. Next slide, please. So as you know, the district of Somalis declared a climate emergency in 2019, and a big outcome of that was the declaration that we need to achieve 45% emissions reductions by 2030. And the way we are going about that at the municipal level is with the community climate action plan, which I'll be referring to as the CCAP. Next slide, please. So transportation is a big part of the the community climate action plan. As you can see from the 2017 BFI data, 52% of our emissions and approximately 55% of our energy expenditures are related to transportation. Next slide, please. So it's fairly obvious why two of the six big moves that are covered in the plan are directly related to transportation. Next slide, please. So we've gone over a couple of times before. Here are the modeled outcomes of the community climate action plan. And we are 6,200 tons per year short of our target for 2030. So we do have to implement this plan and then some to meet our targets. Next slide, please. So I've been working with other staff internally to to take this plan and move toward an implementation strategy. I liken this to someone who splurges and buys a seven-bedroom house, ours, and then realizes that they have to clean each one of the bedrooms. You know, part of having a plan with over 100 actions, it gets pretty tricky to to figure out which ones to put forward. So we've done a lot of work, meeting internally with different experts, and trying to identify ongoing opportunities that we can facilitate, and also new ones that we should undertake. Also being pragmatic about some that have been delayed for COVID reasons. Next slide, please. So here's some of our identified priorities for 2020. There are three of which I will go over very quickly. The third one actually being the charging infrastructure plan. So next slide, please. Next slide, please. So one priority that that was mentioned by a number of people in in different sectors of our of our staff, was the importance of communicating and visualizing what density looks like. And understanding and acceptance of this is fundamental to so many of the actions that we have in the plan, and also to so many of the co-benefits that we want to realize. So this was highlighted as a real opportunity, and something that can serve as a number of the actions within it. It kind of is an umbrella that will help us to implement a lot of planning initiatives and others. Next slide, please. Another stubborn move that we really want to make progress in is retrofitting existing buildings. So one thing that we're actively looking into is capturing thermal images of households and distributing these to the population, along with detailed information about how people can receive assistance for retrofits. Next slide, please. And the reason that we are here today is to talk about the third one. Another big priority is, of course, electric vehicles. So we have outlined a plan, which we intend to be a high-level guide to direct our actions going forward. And mostly, we are excited to present to you and give feedback on the guiding principles of the plan and the priorities of action within this plan. Next slide, please. So you can say a lot about this plan, but it does lack vision. There's a whole bunch of cascading and supporting visions in this, in this report. I won't paint you by reading them all, but it is very well supported by by the CCAP and other ongoing actions and our strategic plan as well. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is an important slide. These are the guiding principles of the EV plan. So the first one, we want to be very clear that EVs are a key in achieving our climate action goal. They are a complement to, but not a substitute for increased active transportation and transit. The second one is we will not directly enter the business activities associated with EV charging. And the third one is And the third one is we will use the mechanisms that we can to enable and incentivize EV infrastructure in key locations throughout the city. I'm going to go over these in a little bit more detail in the next three slides. Next slide, please. So the first one, complementary strategies. So there's a number of emissions targets that we need to hit, one of which is rapid greenhouse gas mitigation. EVs do realize larger mitigation opportunities in the short term, and they are more directly influenceable by a local government. So for this reason, big move three is highlighted as a little bit more preferable. Another big thing that we have to be considering is climate change co-benefits. So both of these big moves help us to realize energy and potentially cost-saving benefits. However, big move four, sorry, big move two has more potential to achieve co-benefits related to compact communities and also natural area conservation. Also, there's opportunities to address both of them, so opportunities like electrifying bus infrastructure would be a fantastic way to go forward. Finally, we need to be comprehensive equity. We have to realize that electric vehicles are just not accessible to a large segment of our population. So for these and other reasons, both of these strategies have to be, or both of these big moves have to be taken into consideration. Next slide, please. I will go over this, but just some quantitative information about the emissions reduction opportunities with electric vehicles. Essentially, no matter where or how you charge an EV, there is less greenhouse gas emissions associated with it over a flight. We are very lucky to have predominantly hydroelectricity in British Columbia, so it's a little less than a third in many lifetime emissions in this estimate. Next slide, please. So principle two, the District of Swamish does not have electrical engineering on staff. Both of our electricians are fully extended, and they do not have the capacity or the specific expertise at this point to take it off. So it would be a major leap forward for the District of Swamish to enter business of this sort. Also, it is borderline stretching the kind of understood scope of a local government to enter into this sort of initiative. And just as it would be odd for us to open a gas station, in the spirit of keeping the scope of local government appropriate, we feel that it is better, to the greatest extent possible, to allow other groups of people to take these on, both the costs and the opportunities. Next slide, please. And principle three is encourage, enable, and incentivize. So we want to apply for programs to allow others to install them. We want to apply for funding to make it easier to install infrastructure, and we want to leverage things like variances. So a good example that we can go into a vast, there was a recent variance that was allowed in response, in return for two additional EV charging stations. So there's lots of creative solutions, and we look forward to trying to find them. Just a small example I came across late last night is New West is capitalizing on excess energy available in streetlights because they have switched to LED lights. So they're placing less of the demand, and they're putting Level Two chargers actually in the streetlight infrastructure and allowing that excess electricity to be accessed for charging. Next slide, please. And our broad priorities for action. Firstly, we want to prioritize infrastructure that is available to the public. This means infrastructure both on public and on private land. There are large economic developments, benefits associated with this, and so a lot of co-benefits with tourism, et cetera. We definitely need more publicly available electric infrastructure. Part two is more related to helping citizens to charge their own vehicle, and we would place private fleet infrastructure under this priority. And part three, we have to hit 10% of fleet vehicles, and that's going to be a challenge, so we also need to address corporate DOS fleet infrastructure. Next slide, please. So these are broad kind of priorities for action and the principles that we're going to be working from, but here are some of the many next steps that we need to be taking. So we want to get out and establish partnerships, looking for people who want to take this on, and figuring out how we can help them along with it. We also need to be very strategic with other parties like transit, like car sharing, parking, et cetera. We have to, you know, we have to be synchronous with those. There are going to be updates to building by law. We also need to review incentive programs and decide whether or not, or to what degree we would like to add on to those. And also collaborating regionally. There's a lot of opportunities to scale up and realize benefits of joint procurement. The town of Roseland has done a great job of doing that and establishing the whole region as a leader in electric vehicle infrastructure. And of course, we need to engage with the community to direct implementation, in particular where this infrastructure needs to be located. And this is infrastructure in industrial, commercial, and institutional development, not too far. Okay, I hope I have to break through this too, too fast, but really wanted to be respectful of your time. And we, to conclude, our recommendation is that the District of Swamish approve the Electric Vehicle or EV Charging Infrastructure Plan. Next slide, please. At this point, Chris Wickham, Gary Buxton, and myself invite your questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Questions, Counselor? Is he Counselor French? Please go ahead, Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. So I noticed in the report, there was mention of staff sheet connections with North Vancouver and Whistler potentially initiating friendly competition, and I see a gap there. What about Scoville, Original District, Lion Bay, West Vancouver? Are North Vancouver and Whistler just examples, or like what's up with that?
That's an excellent point, Counselor French. They were just made as examples. They happen to be two of the local governments that I have looked into in more detail, but you are correct, that should be updated to be more inclusive. It was not meant to exclude certain other areas or local governments, but those in close proximity, particularly those along what's known as the Green Highway, two have really been highlighted by two federal governments as an opportunity to be leaders in this.
Great, thanks, Chair.
Counselor Stone.
Thank you, to the Chair. Two questions. The first is on the objective in the plan. It focuses on increasing the availability and charging infrastructure publicly available. However, then some of the follow-up actions, all of the first one around public availability and charging stations is also using the levers that we have to increase availability generally to private property and residential, and also the corporate fleet. So I'm just curious about the language and the objective itself, does it really is around specifically public access, or is it more generally just increased access to charging infrastructure across the board?
I mean, there's, because there's publicly available infrastructure, but you could have publicly available infrastructure on private property. So I think it's more of the orientation. So we want to first and foremost prioritize EV infrastructure that is available to anyone, because we feel that that's the, it fulfills, it partially fulfills the objective, too, and has big economic development co-benefits. And I'm pretty sure I didn't actually answer your question, though, so I didn't like, I keep.
Yeah, no, that's all right, and I agree that there is that nuance, and I think that that prioritization of publicly available infrastructure is important. Just on page three of your report, where it states the objective generally of the plan, I don't know if we need to specifically call it publicly available in the overall objective, because I think it's a multi-pronged approach to increase infrastructure generally with a prioritization of public. My second question is to push a little bit on this idea that the district will not directly enter into business activities associated with EV charging, and I appreciate the direction and the perspective there, and I think I follow it. My question would be, if we then put, does that limit us from putting an EV charger at running park, for example? And because that's something that I would envision us doing, but does that kind of principle lead us away from doing something like that and encouraging somebody else to operate it?
You're right, there is some potential for this to make certain locations and certain, and also certain types of chargers a little more difficult. However, I think it's a kind of a fundamental underlying objective, our principle, that the less we are holding, the better. We can still own it and allow other companies to completely operate, and we can allow other companies to own it and still let other company to operate, so it's kind of a hierarchy. And the more we can enable someone else to buy and take responsibility for the infrastructure that is prioritization. I'd like Chris or Gary to chime in here.
Mr. Buxton? Mr. Buxton or Mr. Wickham, do you want to respond this time? Go ahead, Mr. Wickham, if you'd like to offer a comment. Oh, you can get muted.
Sorry, can you, just earlier, I wouldn't have a vote of you. I would add that entering into a partnering agreement where the district provides land either on the side of the street or at whatever, so we think it's absolutely one of the tactics that would be allowed and encouraged in this plan.
Mr. Buxton, do you have anything to add there at this time?
Mr. Wickham, maybe. That ends the live. Thank you.
Very good. Any follow-up, or I'll move then to Mayor Elliott, followed by Ms. or Counselor Penney. And you are muted this time, Mayor Elliott. There we go.
And one of the tactics is consider zero emission vehicle priority. What does that mean?
Mr. Pickens, there we go.
Yes, could you put me to that page number?
That's the six of your report, or 55 in our data.
Okay.
Can I help you with that?
Please go ahead, Gary.
Yes, I know that's crafted, some highlights some districts in that have priority, so that is an unlikely but possible outcome or option for us to consider on social issues of some quality.
Okay, one of the things when I heard when I was in Norway, and it was very difficult actually to find infrastructure in the downtown in Oslo, multiple chargers at home, but the problem they were running into was that the power infrastructure to neighborhoods wasn't there to then support widespread adoption, especially in multifamily buildings. And so what I wonder in this report is actually if we have to do an assessment in our neighborhoods where we expect to add quite a bit of density, whether the infrastructure is there to support the kind of adoption.
Do I understand that?
Oh, sure, do you want to go ahead? Gary, please.
Yes, to the Chair. Yeah, I mean, the second probably, or the second priority is around private infrastructure vehicles, and that, we've already been doing that substantially through the residential requirements in, for EV charging in new multifamily residential. What we need to do is make sure that that long-term planning, rezoning, and sub-area plans are certainly to be seen higher, so they need to know about the impending capacity that's coming from the resulting development. That's sort of a meta-planning issue that we need to work with and recover to make sure the capacity there we need.
Yeah, I think it's important to flag, because that's what was slowing down Oslo in some neighborhoods, was just if you were the last guy in, you couldn't put charging in your building. So they're kind of retrofit older buildings, that sort of thing, and they're getting stuck because now they've got to backtrack and actually put any infrastructure to get enough power to some of their neighborhoods. So if it's not flagged here, it should be flagged somewhere in our plan. And it talks about, we have set aside $100,000 for the implementation of the CCAP this year. How much of this budget is expected to go to this project?
That's an excellent question to the Chair. The, we have thus far set aside one quarter of that budget for this project, but that is, we have, so that is what we have planned for, but we are, you know, it's still in flux, there's still other priorities competing with it, but right now, we set aside a quarter of that budget. Thank you.
And lastly, the tourism sector is obviously been highlighted, I think, a little bit in this report, but clearly providing infrastructure for tour buses to stop here and find an easy place to recharge, I think is important. So I think engaging with tourism early is an important aspect to this plan.
Excellent point. Yeah, I think we've only been, we've been taking a little biopsically just with private vehicle tourists, so that's a good point.
Thank you.
Counselor Penney.
Yeah, thank you. Just on the principles, reading through the CCAP and some stuff that's implied and from the conversation that is touched on a little bit, seems to be that there is a hierarchy in these options, where active transit first, and then EV, public transit, private EVs, followed by single combustion vehicles. And I wonder if it's not useful, or do you think it would be useful to clarify just very explicitly that hierarchy in this, in the first principle, because, you know, the complement piece, maybe it's not the same footing if it's not as clear, and do you think that would be worthwhile?
That's a really interesting idea. One thing I struggle with, personally, I struggle with my own orientation to work transit and active transportation versus the kind of the pragmatic emissions reduction opportunities associated with the EVs. So that is why, that is what motivated us to kind of, to think of them as complements, because they, they, they're each, we're getting to the same goal, but EVs have more opportunity based on all the model that we have available to us to lower our emissions earlier. So I think being pragmatic has to put them both on the same, on the same footing. Open to feedback and discussion is a really interesting point, but our thinking for this report was to have them fairly equal and working together. Invite others to disagree with that.
Yeah, if I can follow up on that, my thought is that, you know, I'm looking at this beyond just the EV versus active transit, and it's how you design your city, and I think having that priority, it's then you start looking zoning and how your buildings are organized and where your employment lands are located in relation to residential land to speak to, I think, a much bigger picture, those are important pieces of that. And I don't think I have to minimize investment or progress on the EV piece, but personally, I think that context might be very important. But I'll leave that if I can go on to the next. I'm just wondering if I can get, I did struggle a bit with the idea that we not directly enter into business activities, and one, you know, I was struggling to find revenue, but also just more broadly, you know, I presumably will be leasing public land to private operators, and we'll get some revenue for that, and, you know, that doesn't seem to be, I guess, what we're talking about here, so I'm just wanting to see if we can clarify, or is it, you know, are we trying to say we're not going to be involved in sort of end consumer operations and sort of the pucks, if you will, that the outlet, but sort of higher up the food chain, we actually don't have a problem getting involved and generating revenue from this?
Your response was to have a separate.
Yeah, so Ian, maybe I can add something.
Go ahead, Mr. Stone.
There are potential revenues that aren't guaranteed, but there are absolutely capital costs involved in getting into this business. So there is a, I mean, there's not a knowledge gap, but there's a knowledge deficiency in the organization. We don't have resources to do the electrifying, you know, we don't have IT horsepower handling, the financial backend on this. And the revenues are not guaranteed, but the expenses are. So yes, there are revenues that are uncertain, but there are clear and known expenses to get this stuff installed. Yeah, there are grants available, but if you don't have grants, and those grants are ultra-competitive across the nation. So it's a business area that comes with a potential upside, but we guarantee sort of financial downside. So it's an area that we just don't feel we're getting to that much power.
Thank you, Mr. Buckstein. Follow-up for Mr. Pennington? Council Pennington?
Yeah, so it sounds like that it's really about staying away from business activities that involve infrastructure or just leasing public land for profit, that might be okay. Is that what I'm hearing? I just wonder if that's a useful clarification.
I guess I don't get the follow-up question. I'm not fully on the follow-up question.
Well, as it's written, it just said we're not getting involved in any business activities. But for me, you know, leasing some land, not doing any infrastructure, but leasing some of the public land and making the money off that, I would consider that a business activity, and I guess that's why I was confused.
Yeah, I think the plan is crafted to say that we're not going to be directly in the business. We may be indirectly in the business, agreed, yes, but from that point of view, it's not the way we're not going to be involved, we're not going to be the primary business operator.
Thank you.
We can provide some clarification on that, that's a good point.
Very good. I have a question on my own, but I'll just defer if any of your councillors have not spoken. Mr. Pickens, oh, let's go to, first of all, to Council Reese. Miss Council Reese?
Thank you. Just getting out of mute. So, but I absolutely agree on that particular point about the municipality not getting into the business, and it's a general statement for me, because typically municipal governments don't have expertise in a particular business activity. The second thing, though, that should never be lost on us, is that business almost inherently provides risk. There's never a business that's absolutely guaranteed. And when you take somebody else's money, taxpayer's money, and you put it at risk, then I think that's a real owner's responsibility, and we shouldn't be doing that. So it's easier, and the example we're doing right now is copper coil, for example. We lease the land, somebody else runs the restaurant. And it's just the same thing here. To Council Pennington's point, there is a distinction in the income tax act, for example, between an active business and a passive business. And just being a landlord, renting out your land that somebody carries on some kind of an activity on it, is more the passive side of it, if that helps to clarify it. So we are landlords, we do rent out land to people for different operations, but we don't conduct the operations. And I think that's a very important distinction we shouldn't lose. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Pickens. I'm going to describe two potential projects, and my question will be, do they belong in this plan, this infrastructure plan, with respect to meta-planning issues, guiding principles, priority actions, or maybe even zoning by law? And the two projects I'd like to describe are both related to transportation. First of all, in your, in the language you're using in your framework report, you're referring also to two front squamish, that is highway travel, commuting. And one of the scenarios being looked at at the oceanfront is ferries, and electric-powered ferries, as well as electric-powered float planes. This has perhaps been in the news for most of us, but it's some extent been going on for a few years, but these are active conversations. So, and you did include a picture of the highway, so, you know, commuting, do they belong and so on. The next project I'd like to describe is, when you refer to industrial, when you refer to corporate industrial fleets, mostly I get a sense you're referring to the district or to GFL as examples, but there are others, and my question concerns the forest industry. Within the inner harbor, the forest industry has perhaps between 20 and 30 pieces of heavy equipment running on diesel. And the forest industry would like to discuss and has explored electric-powered vehicles and electricity generated by wood waste conversion. So these two project scenarios, do they belong in this infrastructure plan with respect to meta-planning issues or guiding principles, or are they separate and distinct? What is your feel on that?
Thank you, Councilman, that's a very thoughtful question. I, I'll be a fan of this and invite my supervisors to correct me or outright disagree with me. I would say for electric ferries, that it would fall under this plan guidance. That would be another fantastic example of a way to address and move two and three together. So I would say electrification for the purpose of personal transportation, so it would fall under this purview. I would say corporate industrial fleets, that wasn't one of your main points, but that would fall under the kind of the second priority of private infrastructure. We believe that we want to do what we can to clean up our own house and to provide an example, that there, we have a little bit more direct say on that, so that's why DOS fleets have been kind of outright highlighted as one of our three priorities. I would say with industry and heavy equipment that although it's a very exciting opportunity and it would be something we'd want to take on, I don't think it would fall under the guidance of this report. That's my feel, just because it is not oriented toward transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens, that's a helpful reflection there. Now, council, we are going to be moving on to another item shortly, because the RCMP and Ms. Goldbeck do have some time constraints. So I'm going to just try to move us along through any quick comments before we address the recommendation on the draft vehicle charging infrastructure plan. So are there any further comments or last questions? And we'll try to be as efficient as we can. Thank you. Council Pennington?
Yeah, a couple of comments. In some of the objectives, it's optimistic increasing the availability of EV charging. I would love to see in some of these some target numbers. I think one more public charger, I believe, would be a hundred percent increase, you know, municipal land, and so, you know, we could have some pretty good target initial ones, but I think some hard numbers would be good. The other piece, some comments for me, you know, we don't have the electrical engineers, the capacity to do some of this work. And so I brought up, and I just want to touch on it quickly, you know, I do imagine the potential that as we're trying to attract staff and think about compensation, maybe a compensation alternative, a part of your compensation is you get solar panels on your roof, and we have municipal staff that can do that, so you don't have to deal with a contractor and so on. So, you know, we can be retrofitting homes, doing those sorts of things too. We're building that knowledge, that capacity, and maybe some people they go on, they call on their own business in town in that sector. And so we're part of building that infrastructure and seeing this get out in hand, and we are investing in our staff, but still also investing in that residential infrastructure, which is very hard for us to do. And so just as we're thinking about how to tackle this, I think ideas like that should be generally on the table, and we shouldn't discount building some of that capacity if necessary.
Other comments? Mayor Elliott?
I think we're on the right track with this. I don't think we should be getting into the business of anything, sticking to what we're supposed to be doing. We already get downloaded enough, and I think we can be a passive player in this and make a big difference. So I'm happy with the direction we're going, but I think some of the other comments that have been provided today are helpful to your thinking as to take this forward, and I think early engagement is one of them for sure.
Council Sugar?
I'm all over towards the direction that this is going. One other thing that just jumped to mind for consideration is how we consider not just supporting those who are able to purchase and own the vehicles, but also just general access to electric vehicles. And so as we are bringing on additional car shares, are there policies that we can bring into place that support transition of car shares, like EV and things of that?
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Herbert?
Thank you. I'm supportive of this direction, and I agree with the report, and there seems to be a bit of a consensus around staying on the direct, the direct business. I'm happy to facilitate, whether that's finding a way to use it, to land or whatever, using the leverage that we do have, but so that's for that part. But no, I'm supportive of the, of this direction and appreciate your work. Thank you.
Council French?
Yeah, I'm too. I'm supportive of the direction and don't support trying to compete with solar panel and dollars. Private sector has the expertise, let's tap that expertise that's out there.
Thank you. I have one brief comment to offer myself. Mr. Pickens, there is a number of things I could say about the attention you're giving in the language and phrasing you're using. I think it's a very carefully crafted document, and there's many examples of that I could point to, but there's one suggestion I will have, and that is, when we discuss transportation demand management, that's not the phrase you use, but I'm looking in the report to council where you suggest as follows, electric vehicles are key, but they are complement to and not a substitute for increased active transportation and transit. To that, Mr. Pickens, I would like to suggest we should add, let's also consider always reducing the need for transportation, local jobs or neighborhood design, but reducing the need for transportation is also a key pillar in any transportation demand management, and that's just some phrasing or additional language that we can always be mindful to be, to include. Other than that, I'll now call the question, or call for a motion. I'm sorry, call for a motion, if anybody would like to move that we approve the electric vehicle charging infrastructure plan as has been presented. Council Herbert, do you make that motion? And a secondary? Mayor Elliott? Any last comments? Mr. Pickens, are you satisfied with the feedback you have today?
Very much, thank you, ready to press.
Then I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Thank you very much, folks. As I've already mentioned, our next guests are under some time constraints, and I'm just going to confer with our staff here as to whether we're ready, or it looks like we haven't. Natasha Goldbeck is with us already, and if it's all right with you, council, we will go into this next item, which is a presentation on the 2021-2022 RCMP multi-year financial plan. Ms. Goldbeck, will you be leaving this presentation?
I will, yeah, it's just me. And thank you for accommodating with time constraints. I know that you feel supposedly ready for a break. You have a memo in front of you. It's fairly straightforward, I'll just speak to it briefly. The purpose of this memo is just to give council an update on a process that we go through every year with our RMP. Their multi-year financial planning process requires us to submit documents at particular timelines that don't line up with our own budget cycle. And so we submit the, what is called the Schedule V and Schedule VI letters, which are anticipating resource requirements in advance of our own budgeting process. And then after we go through our budgeting process, then if we need to, we update the Schedule V and VI with our RMP afterwards, and we're not bound to our previous indications of Schedule V and VI. So what I'm going to do here is submit Schedule V and VI to match the resource levels that are in our five-year financial plan currently. There is no financial request coming from our RMP at this time. I know there was some public correspondence suggesting that our RMP is asking for resources at the time, and that is not the case. We deal with our RMP budgets at budget planning, along with everything else. This is just indicating we're already in our existing financial plan and may be updated. Another thing that I'll just like is that we do have an RMP out currently for a Public Safety Master Plan, which will give us recommendations on resourcing levels for the next number of years in our Public Safety Teams based on demographic data as well as issue trends. So that RMP's out right now, we'll open up those results of the Master Plan, and by fall, in time to be included prior to the 2021 budget process being completed. So by the completion of the 2021 budget process, the numbers that are in the Schedule V and VI right now for 2021 onwards, they are very likely will change, and we are able to do that.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Goldbeck at this time? Council Reese?
Thank you. Maybe I've missed something on this, but when I was looking through this, and we look at the next five years, we see the strength going from 26 to 29 next year, and then the 31 the year after. And when I was reading that, and of course that generates some significant projected budget hits in those years. When I looked at that, I was wondering if I'd missed something, because the last discussion I can recall on membership was adding one and possibly two was requested. And the second thing that's related to that, when we look at five years, is there a reason that we would load it on the front end as opposed to trying to smooth it up, whatever numbers we ended up with? Or am I missing something? I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, through the chair. The, when we amended the financial plan back in April, May of this year, we reduced the planned 2020 authorized strength back down to 26 members. So 2020 has an authorized strength of 26 members. 2021 onwards is the financial plan, we did not amend those. 2021 also has included a externally funded position, you may recall, and so that's reflected in the RMP documents for 2021, '22, and so forth. But again, we, as we are doing this Public Safety Master Plan, we will get those reverse strengths recommendations back, and we can, we can change the scaling up or whatever the implementation of the recommendations look like, based on council's priority to smooth financial impacts, or whatever the case may be.
Thank you. Any further questions? Council Pennington?
Yeah, so, I mean, with everything that's going on in the world right now, the protests and so on, we have got letters and people talking to me, and I think, I guess I am concerned, because I like Council Reese, I was a bit confused by the number jump I saw, as well as actually the overtime for LNG, and that's something we don't even know is going ahead, and when you look at the most recent news, I'm really hesitant to sort of suggest in that in planning that that's where we're headed. And that's something I would, you know, I guess I'm struggling with these, just the suggestion that we think this is where we're headed, because I don't know that we are at all, and I think, I guess, I'm wondering, how do we reconcile? Does it make sense to just sort of leave this out and then deal with the Public Safety Master Plan? Or should we maybe pull back these numbers and say, you know, we're not really, I don't think sure about that we're going to be approaching anywhere near this necessarily, and so let's stick to something that may be more, reflect a little bit more closely where we are right now?
Through the chair. I, my inclination and the intention of the Public Safety Master Plan is to be making resource decisions based on demographic data analysis. That's not to say that council will have discretion within that. The Master Plan will likely The Master Plan will likely draw on a data point called the cost-to-cost ratio, the member-to-population ratios. And as you see in previous presentations, those can be all over the map and really depend on the community's priorities about how strongly they want policing to be a presence and how well they want resource policing. There's definitely no shortage of things for police officers to do. And so we can look at comparable communities and say, you know, based on the trends and the kind of level of public support or a high level of policing, this is what that would look like and here would be the cost impact. We certainly could, if this council wished, change it now to reflect a community feeling if that's the intention and then change it again after we have the data to support, you know, a set of options that you choose probably one of a few options. With the change now, then later we'll be changing it again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I get, sorry, I think there's two issues here. And the one is, you know, my understanding is that when you're talking about increasing the numbers, part of that was in relation to wood fiber possibly going ahead and now that seems a lot less certain. But on top of that, we also have $200,000 a year in addition to members. And so that, there seems to be a significant disconnect about where we are just on that piece. And so I'm not sure how we reconcile that. And then the separate discussion from that, I think, is given the discussion that's going on today. It's not just about cost to cost. It is what services is it that we want police to be providing? And do we want to be maybe redirecting resources to mental health and that sort of thing? Social services as an alternative, which again, I guess sometimes where we deal with these two things. And so I think those are two issues here.
Yeah, sure. And sorry for missing the couple of pieces in your last comment there. The LNG funded member, we had wanted to have that in the, in the operating society because there are significant recruitment delays. And so if and when we need that position, we won't then be in a position that will need to wait a year or a year and a half to actually get somebody in place to do that work. And so again, it can be canceled anytime. It doesn't commit us to anything. But by indicating an interest in that, having that extra STE available to do that work, we have it sort of ready when we need it. So we can change the date, we can cancel it, whatever that recruitment is in process. The overtime budget piece, this was your other question on that point, I believe, is often because we can't fully fill the lines to which we're funded because of training and annual leave and other kinds of leave that people look for. If we're funded to a strength of 26, which we are currently, we only ever have 24, 24 and a half people actually on the ground doing the work. And so we have to compensate that with overtime. Unfortunately, that is, that is the reality of the environment, HR environment. So that is a challenge. And so in terms of the activities, would you like me to speak to that now or did I go one way first?
Yes. Counselor Peddignall, I do have three speakers on the list, but let us let Natasha Golbeck continue on this line and then we can go to Counsel Stone and come back to you later if we miss something. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I just a couple of comments about what our detachment is doing to do what they refer to as relationship-based policing. And they, our local detachment is actually really prioritized on working towards equity in institutions and the way that they do that is through relationship-based policing. We have quite a significant focus and both in terms of priorities and resourcing on outreach-based policing and doing the appropriate referrals and supporting agencies and having good strong links with our mental health teams and our social services providers. That is a care and science are also in charge. That is a very clear leadership priority for her and she's committed to resourcing and upholding that throughout membership. Another thing that I wanted to mention too in terms of that is that our local detachment, all of the members go through the Guamish Nation-led training course, Building Bridges, which districts have also taken, council as well, I believe, to ensure that they're really understanding colonialism and its impact. We do see that awareness and that training showing up in the way that our members do policing. And so that is something that we're very proud of in the community is having that, you know, bias awareness and sensitivity to the legacy of institutions and inclusion of folks in the way that we do operations. I want to mention that. And then in terms of funding to mental health, it is not something that our budget funds currently. So it wouldn't be the same, social services and mental health, it's not part of our code. And so the very little program that we ourselves, the district, would fund in exchange for policing budgets, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Golbeck. Counselor Stone?
Thank you. Through the chair, I think there is no doubt that although this is an annual process that we go through with the RCMP and just in terms of reconciling our budgets and their process and ours, we would be definitely not recognize the time and essence of which this conversation is occurring with everything that is happening across the globe. And so it does really bring into question some big pieces of how we start to reconcile some of these components. I think how, like I know, we're starting to get to some of them. I am still sitting here trying to understand what the process is to address some of those and the step by step that we take relative to this individual piece around financing versus this long, larger question around how we actually want to support community safety in our community and how we aim to transform our financing mechanisms to support poverty reduction and get to that long-term goal of having safer communities that perhaps require less police force. And so I'm trying to fill those two pieces in my own brain and perhaps rambling a little bit as I chat here about that. So I guess my first question, Ms. Golbeck, is you mentioned that this is an annual process. So I appreciate that this is kind of signaling what it is that we might want for strength to be. We've done our, our budget for this year and kind of forecasted our five-year budget, five-year budget planning process, which you just indicated. We have one increase in force this year and then projected budget for another next year. However, this document shows an increase in three force numbers in the 21, 20, 22 budget. So that to me is a discrepancy between what we have and what is in this document. And I just want to confirm that that is my understanding, that is the correct discrepancy from my reading.
Yeah, through the chair. That was a result of prior to amending the 2020 budget, there were 28 members in the 2020 budget and then one per year after that. And so one of those, one of those members was an LNG funded member in 2020. So that brings the total to 28 and then 29. Number 28 is still the LNG position, but then there was one increase the following year. So when we excluded the LNG funded position and the requested strength increase for 2020, that brought us down to 26 members and we didn't touch the 2021 number. It remained at 29, expecting that we may present and that we knew we were going to do the Public Safety Master Plan this year anyway. And that, again, it would be updated in a more sort of data-driven way before the end of the budget cycle. But we did not change the other vantage years since they would not affect taxation. Does that make sense?
I'm still not entirely clear. So does the district's partnership's five-year financial plan suggest that we'll have a force of 29 in the year 2022?
Yes.
Okay. And then my other just clarifying question on the actual budget is between the, so this is, I'm going to find the page number in case anybody else wants to follow this detailed question. Page two of four of the report of the actual financials. Between 1920 pre-final and the 2021 AIP numbers, the regular pay for members increases by over $500,000, but we've only increased our force strength by one. And then the subsequent year has an increase for strength of three, but only through the $200,000 increase in regular pay. And I'm just curious how come that had such a substantial jump from 20 to 21?
I am going to need to, I have a sense of what this is and I don't want to get it wrong. So I'm going to have to get that to you on that and confirm if that's okay. You're looking at line 3830, right? Correct.
Very good, Ms. Golbeck. Go to Mayor Elliott at this time.
All right. So I'm going to ask you a question, Natasha, and it's not meant to insult you at all, but could you go through this budget with us item by item and be able to explain it?
Yeah, I mean, on a high level, like certainly not line by line, but I-
Who could sit down with us?
Amanda Daly is the person that I work with at our local detachment, the administrative manager for the City of Fire Region. And she knows this budget in, I don't know, Chief Michael Superson. Certainly the RCMP finance team is supportive as well, I have to admit, for your members. But Amanda is generally the person I work with most.
So we could plan a future meeting where we could really go through this. Some of the increases are large and this already makes up 26% of our overall budget, operating budget. But in reading through it, like you find some of those discrepancies like Counselor Stone found, it's hard to explain why. The other, so that's, so I'm just trying to figure out like who should we invite to that meeting if we have questions about how these budgets are built and issues around green timbers and the settlements that were created around administration for that? We still build like a giant download for the provincial and federal government. There's new equipment being spoken of. Now they're caught with cameras in the news. So these are things that I think it would probably be helpful for council to understand this budget in a little bit more detail, for sure. Also, there is a contract management committee that is made up of mayors. Can you maybe describe how that interacts with policing at the local level?
Yeah, so there is a provincial contract management committee that has representatives from the municipalities and some cases mayors and some cases that feel or primary police contracts, police contacts rather, which is myself. And that group monitors the negotiation and implementation of the contract whenever changes. They work on behalf of PSSG and they are sensitive to this and we work on behalf of municipalities. So we, we should not currently have a representative on that group, but we do go to quarterly meetings to get updates from that team as well as other relevant issues. So we get, we get, you know, to get the information from them, but we don't participate in meetings.
It's certainly an area where I think if we want to make fundamental systemic changes, it would be working with UVCM to influence the membership of that group and certainly trying to obtain membership on that group. The other thing I know from the correspondence that we've received, you know, asking us to reduce the budget for the RCMP is, and people have mentioned this before, is that mental health and addiction is not, is not what we do. That's a provincial and responsibility. So if we took money out of the RCMP budget, we would put it into roads and pipes and active transportation. We would not get into the business of delivering mental health services. We do have a very important role in terms of advocacy, but I hope our community understands that police budget here are not built the same way in the state. So that a letter to us is really important, but also a letter to provincial MLAs in housing and mental health and addiction and children's health services are also really important if people would like to see a change in how we deliver those services. So one of the things I'm wondering, Ms. Golbeck, is in our Public Safety Master Plan, can we actually identify the role that police have had to take on because a decade ago or more, we stopped funding mental health and addiction and building housing? Well, that was 30 years ago. There just simply aren't the supports there. So if you wanted 24/7 response to a mental health crisis in many communities like ours, the only people available to respond are the police. And we had, you know, an incident the other day where an officer, the officer found someone in distress, deescalated the situation, called their on-duty crew, got that person to a doctor so that they were safe and sure they needed it. So every day, our RMP are doing a job that no one else is doing because our provincial government doesn't fund those mental health resources here. So how do we work into our Public Safety Master Plan the need for a mental health response team locally? How do we reflect that there's work our police are doing that they would, certainly we'd rather be done by someone else that's in more of a social service role if those were funded appropriately? How do we capture that need in this plan so that we can create that context for the discussion?
Yeah, if I may, through the chair, I 100% agree with all of the things that you just said. There are excellent models in other larger communities, including Vancouver and other, what are called AP teams, that are partnerships between clinicians and the police force and other relevant sort of providers like housing. They, it's been a work in progress in many ways, but they've seen a lot of success with that model, particularly with very acute, high-pitched users, both who require a lot of support and interest with the justice system quite a bit. Given our, you know, our much longer population, but there would be, I think, a real different kind of model so that our officers are able to focus on policing issue and the mental health clinicians and school services can do that. So we will be looking at a review that we know that at our local detachment, mental health calls do take up quite a bit of time as well as, I think, teen energy too because they are difficult to call. And so we need to address that issue for sure and lots of good precedent across the problem.
So will it capture that in the master planning discussion?
Yes.
My last question is, we've made it mandatory in the district for all of our staff and council members to experience the Building Bridges, so understanding colonialism through an experiential education. Is that also mandatory for the RCMP members that work in the district?
Yes, every single one.
Do you know how many of them have taken it?
All of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. We'll go to Counselor Reese. I'll set Counselor Herbert on the list as well.
Thank you. And just going back to this, the number of officers that show on the schedule, if I understand this correctly, if it's like our five-year plan, financial plan, is it fair to say that this represents kind of the outside of the envelope for possible needs in the future to give the RCMP a heads up for that? Actual decision on how many would be made by us at budget time? Is that a fair statement?
That is exactly a fair statement, yes. Thank you.
Okay. So that helps me get by some of these numbers that I don't want to start splitting hairs today about some of these numbers and how many police officers and so forth, because I think that is a future budget decision and I think it will largely be informed by the Public Safety Master Plan. And I was going to make a comment, the mayor actually covered almost all of my thoughts on that, except to say that I think the Public Safety Master Plan- except to say that I think the public safety master plan is where we might have that kind of discussion if there are ways that we can somehow guide or help to guide our policing through the community. But keeping in mind that, you know, I'll speak for myself, I'm very leery of jumping on the bandwagon when it starts off in the States and some of the things that come out of there I just don't think are necessarily applicable. And one of them is the funding model that people talk about, which might work in the States, but as the mayor points out, you know, when you start talking about mental health or housing needs or other social needs, those are all potential responsibilities in Canada and this province. And so that's not really our role if we're gonna take our local tax dollars and start putting it into something like that. So the mayor's right, we try to defund the police, which seems to be a popular thought in some quarters. It's not necessarily going to go to that, not from municipal budget. So I think we have to be just a little bit more strategic about this and a little bit more understanding. And I think the public safety master plan discussion, and maybe there will be some thoughts about that in that plan, given this present climate. I agree with Councilor Stone, we can't be completely deaf to it. We have to answer to our community, we consider these things, and this is our thought. But I think that's the place for that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Perford.
Thank you. Most of my, thank you to my fellow councillors for covering a lot of ground there before I got, before I got to my turn. I think a lot of things were covered, but I'm curious about the public safety master plan and where council feedback will be in that as far as the sort of reference at the onset? Are we just looking at, or does somebody come to us with a finished product? And where are we at on that? Because I feel like that is the more appropriate time to potentially make changes rather than, you know, here today. So I'm curious about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. I really appreciate that council's role in priorities of the community and directing staff work accordingly. And with something as variable as public safety levels, it is very important that council has an opportunity to speak to, you know, what's gonna reflect the needs and interests of the community. So I will bring back with the consultant. I don't have a consultant yet, but this is, my intention is to bring back with the consultant, sort of a suite of options in each category. And here's the resourcing level and structure, and here's what that will look like. And here's an alternative, and here's what that will look like. I have a chance to have some discussion with council about how you best want to represent the interests of the community in each of these areas.
Thank you. I'm going to, Mayor Elliott, we do need to wrap up quickly. Did you have some concluding comment to make?
I just want to, we're just running up into a time constraint, councillor. And since I need to open the special business meeting and recesses, so if you'll give permission to do that before four-thirty right now?
Yes, please, that was my intention.
Okay, so I'd just like to open the special business meeting for Tuesday, two-nine, Tachquano, Sixo, Plac, Bohomish, Oyamayon, the motion to adopt the open agenda moved by councillor French, directed by councillor Race, all of us in favor, please. Let's motion carry. We'll recess that meeting to resume following comments. Thank you, councillor Stone.
Thank you. So that will take a recess at this time?
No, you'll go to keep going on.
Oh, thank you. Okay, just getting orientation here. I'd like to offer a couple of comments on my own, but I will also keep councillor Penningill on the speakers list. I know you wanted to ask something further. Actually, it's really by way of summary of what I've heard, we do seem to have a consensus on an interest in a future orientation session, Ms. Goldbeck. On this budget, the presentation is before us. We have heard also through the community, a lot of interest, and we've been discussing here the general topic of community facing and integration with other social and health programs. And we also heard, and the observation made, that we should take advantage of the public safety master plan as an opportunity for further discussion of that general topic. We heard an interest spelled out by Mayor Elliott on advocacy via the UBCM, and that is on issues of offloading to local government. I'd like to add something to that. And I'd like to refer to the Plankis Report from a few years ago, which focused on other elements of offloading, really relating to the expectations on paperwork, if you like, on RCMP officers and investigations. And that report highlights what a cost burden that is ending up to be for local government. So there's lots of room for advocacy, and let's just conclude with, or make the general observation that we should be attentive to opportunities for advocacy and working with other municipalities. I'm just gonna bring up one further point and turn it back over to councillor Penningill. There was a reference to the police budget being twenty-seven percent of the budget. Of course, that is for the entire protective services, and that includes fire and bylaw and building inspection and emergency programs. Just for the public listening, the police budget itself is just under thirteen percent, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Goldbeck. I'll turn it over to councillor Penningill. Do you have further question or observation?
Yeah, a question and comment. Ms. Goldbeck, how can the public best engage in the public safety master plan?
I don't know yet. I, we have not yet designed the engagement plan. Once there is a contractor on board, some conversations will happen, and we will figure out when to level safety checks.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple of comments. I'd like to hear, I don't think we're gonna have someone come in and do a bit of a deeper dive with us. I mean, when I look at the, we have it in other topics said that we don't want to tax people for services we're not necessarily gonna provide, and that's why some of these overtime numbers, a couple hundred thousand dollars for algae this year, another couple hundred thousand dollars next year, with presumably numbers for that tax as well. Some of those seem a little bit out of line with what we've talked about, and maybe we're not actually taxing for the memory increase, but the overtime numbers, maybe we are. So just, you really get to get some clarity on what we're speaking about there. The other thing I want to touch on is, and I have had the conversation with people, that we do not fund municipal, uh, mental health services and social services at municipal level. But I think effectively what's happened is, because the process pulled out of that, we've been forced to essentially deal with mental health and social services using the police force, which is, I think, in some, many circumstances, ineffective way of doing that. And so I think the question is, you know, maybe it's partly advocacy, maybe it does make sense to put more money into helping answer some of those things for some cases or certain situations. And I think that's the conversation that people are asking us to have. One other thing, I did go out to the protest, and it was a huge turnout, and some really powerful words. I went through the building bridges training, and before coming on council, I'd done a couple of days of inclusiveness training, it's all myself. And I still find, even though I've done all that and taken it to heart, I still find myself doing things that are racist and not at all my intent. When I talk to members in town, I think they are really compassionate and people that care deeply about the community and doing everything they can for the community. But, you know, I think, just as I do, I think there is systemic racism. There is a lot of challenges that we all still, despite training that, engage in. And I think, again, it's another piece of this discussion that we're being asked to engage with and look at and make sure that as a community, we're doing the best we can. And, you know, I do appreciate everyone's effort and everyone's willingness to listen and work on that together.
Thank you very much, councillor Penningill. Councilor Stone, did you have a further question or comment?
I have a further question, but going, just to start to get some clarification on what's being asked. If we were to submit schedule five and six and entertain that we are not looking for an increase in force members beyond the twenty dash twenty-one budget, so twenty-six then, and then leaving it at that kind of twenty-six force, does that, how does that impact the process? We're going into this master planning process, and I don't feel comfortable asking for that increase in envelope without not necessarily knowing that that's really what we need at this point. I think it doesn't necessarily send the right signal that that is the direction that we want to be going. I appreciate councillor Penningill's comments that he just made, that I think this is a really complex issue and the funding mechanism that we get stuck in mean that we are actually subsidizing a lot of otherwise provincial costs in terms of health and mental health through our police budgets. And so I'm just curious, my question is, how much would it impact that budgeting process? If this year we signal that we're gonna keep it at the twenty-six for the time being until we're done that master planning process and we really work through what it is that we see community safety being in our town, and we address this next year?
Through the chair, the risk is that if we do decide to increase resources, that we would then have improvements delays. So if we, because it takes twelve to eighteen months, especially right now, it's quite significant delays, and the time that you say you'd like another member and the time you receive that other member at your detachment is quite significant. So if we don't indicate that we are interested in somebody or some people to join us now, then are we wait till later? Then we'll incur additional overtime next year. We'll have to wait for quite a while, so.
Further questions and comments? At this time, are you looking for a motion to receive this? What is specifically your request, Ms. Goldbeck?
Uh, nothing at this time. I don't, I don't need a motion.
Very good.
Motion to receive.
Yeah.
Councilor Stone?
All right, so I know you don't need a motion, but I am wary to let this opportunity pass us to start to engage in this conversation. So I would like to consider council submit a letter in addition to, what is it, attachment five and six? That you need to submit, schedule five and six, that speaks to the importance of reviewing the funding mechanisms for community and support and safety, that support community safety. And what exactly that motion looks like, I'm not sure yet. But I do think it is important to signal, if we are going to signal, potential increase in force strength, also our town's movement towards looking at alternative ways for funding community safety more broadly.
Ms. Goldbeck, do you have specific reaction or recommendation regarding the councillor's suggestion?
Um, it's just that I don't, I'm not sure if schedule five and six as a complement to that would be the right audience for that direction. I feel that might be better received at the contract management committee, and that is not the recipient of these schedules. This is just for the finance people to put into their spreadsheet. So if you'd like to do a motion of that nature, I suggest that go to either PSSG directly or the provincial management committee.
Further discussion? Councillor Penningill?
Well, to make whether or not I should put forward a motion on this, but I do, I am challenged, given the state of the LG project, what our feedback on the certificate, the fact that we may not get a certificate. Some of this increase was due to wood fiber, the membership number, and we also have a couple hundred thousand dollars in overtime on top. I think that sends the wrong planning signal even to the RCMP. So without presuming the outcome, discussions of the safety plan, you know, at most twenty-seven members, I'm not sure we've talked about members beyond twenty-seven next year for purposes other than algae. And when we have overtime as well, I'm not sure why we would send such a large signal of three additional members next year.
I have councillor Race and Mayor Elliott. Please go ahead, councillor Race.
Thank you. So notwithstanding those comments from my colleagues, I'll move receipt, and if it's seconded, I'll speak to that.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you. And so I take the comments of my fellow councillors, but I think at this point, that was the reason I asked the question. This is not a budget document for us. We are not committing to spending any of that money that's shown beyond this year, which we've already voted on in our budget process. So I wouldn't get caught up with that. I mean, if wood fiber doesn't go ahead, that's fine. To take wood fiber over the budget now, and all they've announced is a delay in construction start, I don't think would be prudent, because what if they do go away, go ahead, and then we're behind the eight ball with our staffing? So I think I'm happy to leave it where it is. Notwithstanding my first question, we have had discussions about increasing the staff or the number of members in the RCMP. That's been in the last two budget discussions, as I recall. So it's not something that's kind of come out of nowhere. It's there, but it has not yet been finalized. We'll do that as we go along through the actual budget discussions. So I think at this point, I think all we need to do is just receive this document. We're not committing the taxpayers to paying anything. We're not committing anybody to do anything. I think the RCMP, through their local detachment officers, have a clear understanding of some of our reluctance, which is jump on larger numbers of members. And so I don't think we're sending the wrong signal to them. This is a planning document, that's it.
Mayor Elliott, would you wish to speak to the motion on the floor?
No, I have a question, but there's a motion on the floor, so I won't read it.
Further discussion on the motion, now councillor Penningill?
Well, yeah, in terms of planning, I think that's part of the reason why I don't think we should be putting twenty-nine. That also includes an additional two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in LG-related overtime. That seems way beyond anything, as far as I am aware, we've ever discussed. And so, you know, the federal government, I don't think we want to mislead them in their planning. So, you know, I have discomfort with, and these are our plans. I don't think they are, to my reflection.
Mayor Elliott?
Changed my mind, thank you. I think it's important to remember that the RCMP are also developing their union. And we did discuss in an earlier meeting that this is highly likely that there will be a requirement to have potentially more people in car. And so we did discuss trying to smooth out the addition of new members by putting people in the future years, because there may be requirements through the union negotiations to have more police officers on duty at any one particular time. So that was contemplated. And again, this, we have to have a conversation in our community about systemic fight. We have to have a conversation in our community about how we take care of and provide the best kind of support to those with mental health and addiction issues. We have to have ongoing conversations about housing first and putting a roof over people's heads so they have a chance to recover. But this is not the document to do it with. This is a first glance to indicate what might be required. We have a master planning process that will involve community engagement and an opportunity for us to think more deeply and have the time and the space to contemplate the community, how we want it to grow, and the police's role in that. But this, to me, does not commit us to anything, does not stop us from having the conversations we need to have, nor prevents us from writing a letter to the ministers involved, the contract management committee, to say we need to take a different- management committee, to say we need to take a different look at this. So to me, I'm okay with the motion that's on the floor, it doesn't mean that I'm not 100% committed to the conversation we need to have in the community.
Very good, thank you. Further comments on the motion on the floor, I'll then call the question, all in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Penningill opposed, motion carried, thank you. Shall we recess then?
No, close this.
Sorry?
Close this one.
Oh, we'll close this meeting.
Thank you.
Counselor Stoner? Please, go ahead.
I'd still like to take the opportunity to try a different motion on this subject, even though we moved our feet, and that would be that the mayor write a letter to the UBCM contract management committee and respective ministers outlining our interest in seeking alternative transformative financing mechanisms to support community safety in our province.
Is it seconded? Mayor Elliott, seconded that motion? Does staff have, here, shall we have the Counselor Stoner read this one out again, or?
She said she can send it to me.
Oh, very good, so we'll have that, the wording of that motion, looks like staff are comfortable with that. Any discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor? Any opposed? Very good then, we passed a motion regarding a letter to the, is it UBCM contract committee? Thank you, Counselor Stoner. Now, can I have a motion to close? Counselor, question, thank you, and seconded?
Terminate.
Terminate.
It will be terminated, okay, excuse me. Counselor Herford is seconding the motion to terminate the meeting. Thank you very much, and I'll call the question, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much, everyone.